This meeting of the planning board for August 20th, 2020. And we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a video or are we just gonna jump in?
Uh.
I'll hold on to Barbara.
All right. Bear with us for a moment, please, folks, because we haven't had a flag ready previously. So we were doing that for the first time this meeting and we wanted to get something up there for everyone.
Okay.
All right, there we go. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we may not get any points as a chorus and for being coordinated, but I think it's a nice thing to do when a flag we did it. Thank you, Brady, for the flag.
Thanks for adding that back in.
Thank you for reminding us, Brenda. So let's, can we do a roll call of attendance?
Yep, Chairman LaRue.
Here.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Here.
Member, here, okay. Member Clerk Raymond.
Here.
Member Cavino.
Present, here.
Member Espo.
Here.
Member Gaffney.
Here.
Member Rappaport.
Okay, this is for again, the town of Burlington will be holding the August 20th, 2020, planning board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 22nd, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under general chapter 30A, section 20.
So this meeting is held via Cisco Webex and is accessible using the link on the town's website as TownofBurlingtonWebX.com. The password is 2020. The meeting can also be accessed by telephone, 617-315-0704, access code 129-312-1519. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT government channels Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. Public input will be, public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the timeframe for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx on the chat function, by phone, Facebook Live, WebEx Chat, and emailing at planning@burlington.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. And also, as I mentioned earlier, there's a, for all of those who have joined us, especially a butters to project or interested parties to projects, there's, via WebEx, there's a person at the bottom of the screen with three lines. If you click that, there's a chat button on the very bottom. If you want to add to the chat what you are here for. I know a number of people have already done that and I thank you very much. It'll help us organize a meeting with a lot of participants, so. All votes will be taken by a roll call. And that's, that's all I have. We're off.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara again. We do have a few continuances, so we're gonna get those out of the way first. Please listen carefully in case the reason you're here is being continued and then you get to go. May I have a motion to take item 7D? Yes, please.
Take item 7D out of order.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7D is a public hearing petition to amend this bylaw Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to signage submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee.
Need a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of September 3rd, 2020, as requested by the applicant in an email dated September 20th, 2020.
Chairman LaRue. Oh, sorry. Second.
Yes.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. I make a motion to take 7I out of order.
Second, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 0 Burch Street. James Danaher is the applicant.
Make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of September 3rd, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated August 20th, 2020.
Second. Chairman LaRue. Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
I make a motion to take 7T out of order.
Second. Member, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, item 7.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Item 7T is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 4 and 5 Redmond Street, Maritels Incorporated applicant.
Make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of September 17th, 2020, as requested by the applicant in an email dated August 11th, 2020.
Second. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So for all of those, so the Burch Street subdivision has been continued to the 3rd. Redmond Street subdivision has been continued to September 17th. And the signage text amendment has been continued to September 3rd.
Thank you. Okay, next we have citizens' time. If there's anyone here who is, would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Okay, see no one, we're gonna move on to announcements.
So the first announcement, so September 3rd, September 3rd planning board meeting was currently scheduled as town meeting items only. Due to the length of our agenda as well as a few, the items that have been continued off this agenda, we'd like to recommend that we take town meeting items first on the 3rd, but also continue a few of the other items from this agenda to that date. And there will be no new items that will open on the 3rd. So I just needed to confirm that with this, this board before we, well, we've already started continuing things to the 3rd. Confirm that that was okay, change of schedule.
If anyone objects, speak now, but hopefully we can just skate right past that one.
Okay. Second, early voting begins Saturday, August 22nd at the Grand View Farm at 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you. And will continue through Friday, August 28th, every day starting at 8:30. Any questions? Look, I would guide you to the town clerk's website. They have a lot of information there. Tuesday, September 1st is the state primary election. The Planning Sculpture Park Subcommittee will be holding a meeting at 7:30 AM in person on, in person on Tuesday, September 1st. I'll let any of those elaborate, but I also congratulate the, the work of the Sculpture Park. They've done a tremendous job getting sculptures here in town. Monday, September 7th is Labor Day. All town offices will be closed. And lastly, I'm sure many of you have already experienced it, but we've been experiencing a delay in the US mail, in mail delivery. We've been told that mail now is going through Boston instead of going through Uber. And we've noticed over the past few weeks that mail was typically take two to three days, it's taking seven to nine days. The town is working to understand the issue a little bit better. So just if you're looking for things or looking for things from us, we would say to anyone that the easiest way for us to contact you is by email or phone. So if you're looking for information from us, make sure we have that information. We can certainly send things out to you in those formats. And that, those are all the things we have if anyone else has an announcement.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara. Just one clarification, it is correct that the Sculpture Park Committee is meeting in person. We are doing that at the actual Sculpture Park. So if anyone wants to attend, that's where we will be. We do not have any people notices or non approvals today. And so we are gonna move on to our first administrative matter, which is item 6A, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 56 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlecks Realty LLC is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Thomas Murphy here for the, the applicants. Jim Decoulas, who's the, the engineer for the project, just wanted to give a brief introduction to the board as to what we're looking to do up there. We had a, a meeting with the joint department heads earlier in the week and there were some additional items that people are looking for from us. So we understand that will be continued past this evening, but we just wanted to take five minutes of your time just to let you know what we're looking to do. So with the chair's permission, I'll just turn this over to Jim and let him fill you in.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is it here, but obviously they're not on my thing here.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name's James Decoulas and as Tom mentioned, I'm the engineer for this project. Great, would it be possible for, for me to share my screen? I guess I can make a request and see what happens here. Great. Okay, so what we have here, I'd like to start in Google Earth. We all set? So 56 Middlesex Turnpike, looking north, 128, beginning of Route 3. Here's the project right here. Trader Joe's across the street, McDonald's across the street. What we have here is five years ago, there was a minor engineering change that was presented to the planning board. And the green lines and parking layout that we see here is what was proposed to the planning board. Which you can see in this area here. What ended up getting, and a portion of that work that was proposed five years ago was extending into the riverfront area. There's actually a perennial river on the other side of McDonald's over in this vicinity here. And the, the 200-foot riverfront line actually extends across the Middlesex Turnpike in this blue line here. So in order to avoid that disturbance to the riverfront area, work was conducted outside of it rather than having disturbance there. We, the applicant Burlecks constructed the parking lot further to the west so that there was no disturbance. So there was a retaining wall constructed, there was a stone sloped wall constructed here. And what we're proposing is to further refine prior work and to actually provide stormwater control. As you can see here, what we're proposing is underground stormwater infiltration. That'll be collected from the front door. There's an upper area to this project and a lower area. If you look at it from Middlesex Turnpike here. This is considered the lower area. Down in this area here, there's, there's an entrance only and then an exit only. So this upper area here is approximately 15 feet, 20 feet higher than Middlesex Turnpike. So what we're proposing to do is provide complete stormwater control for this upper area here. Because what happens during significant rainfall events is that there's a lot of runoff that flows down both driveways. And so what we're proposing to do is to capture the runoff with trench drains. Trench here, trench drain here. They'll all be fed to the stormwater infiltration field. And then they'll be, as a safeguard, there'll be an overflow down in this area here. So that's the first thing that we're looking to do with this project. The second thing that we're looking to do is to provide a dumpster pad. We showed dumpsters in this area here and the planning and Board of Health and Conservation Commission recommended that we put the dumpsters on a pad, provide an enclosure, and then have it sloped down to this catch basin here. The third thing we have to address is the outside play area for proposed daycare center. Right now, we have about 3,000 square feet of enclosed area over here to the south. The proposed daycare needs 1,300 square feet. It looks like we have enough square footage. We may end up reoriented or reconfiguring this chain link fence area here to make it more suitable for the two separate daycare uses that are being proposed there. The next thing that we'd like to do is to improve the handicap access. Handicap access right now is very limited. If we go look at the Google Earth here, you can see there's really only one space that exists right now. And it's very steeply sloped, whoops, it's very steeply sloped from the, from the handicap exit, from the handicap area here down to this entrance. So what we're looking to do is to improve that and provide two spaces, two handicap spaces with a rain garden down gradient. Third thing that we want to do is fix this lower parking area here. Right now, the parking area is trapezoidal. It's a very tight configuration here. What we'd like to do is to improve this, this parking area and square it up and significantly improve the entrance. Last thing that we need to do is provide approval or provide an authorization letter from NSTAR. As many of you know, there's a significant electrical transmission, a set of lines that, that go through this property. They extend across, across Middlesex Turnpike. You can see the towers here. And you can see the towers here on Google Earth. What we need is an approval letter. Andy Ungerson from the building department has asked us to get an authorization letter from the building department. Because the easement actually extends from here to here. It's about a, I think it's a, yeah, it's a 250-foot wide easement that extends across the property here. So we just need NSTAR approval. So those are the, those are the things on our to-do list. That's the basic concept and be glad to answer any questions.
Hey, this is Barbara. Thank you, Jim. Kristin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. So this, you approved a site plan change in 2013 or 14. Jim, correct me if I'm.
Yeah, it's early, I think it was January of 2014.
Okay, so right around that time. So to realign this parking lot as well as put in stormwater at that time, what this is, is this is changing that configuration a little bit to meta-match what they've done in terms of moving it up and away from the riverfront. It'll actually, the stormwater system, I think, is probably, anyway, it seems to make a lot more sense in what we have configured. Jim, did the original change the configuration down below?
No.
Okay, so it's actually fixing a kind of a bottleneck that happens there. So it seems like a lot, but it's really just a lot of kind of pavement changing. One of the things that we've just been a little bit, we just want to really see happen is, since we approved it so long ago, is really try to get on the same page with what we should be doing moving forward. We're still waiting on some stormwater clogs as well as, as mentioned, the outdoor play area and some parking table revisions for the uses in the building. So we don't recommend any action tonight. It's the first hearing anyway. But we'll get some more information with that and get some more feedback from Board of Health and Conservation on the stormwater. They do, will be filing a sedimentation erosion control permit with Conservation before our next meeting. So they'll be hearing that. But overall, I do agree it's a better configuration and we just hope we can try to, to get it, get it done in stormwater, putting in stormwater in a site that doesn't have very much right now.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Jim. So we're not gonna be voting on this tonight. They will be coming back for a vote. Are there any planning board members who want to make a comment or ask a question right now?
Barbara, this is Ernie.
Yes, Ernie.
I do, I do have one question. I noticed that since we approved this, the minor engineering changes five or six years ago, there really wasn't anything done about the stormwater management. And I think that was one of the reasons that we did approve it. Because we knew that water was kind of sheet flowing down the driveway out into the Middlesex Turnpike. And I just wanted some assurances from the owner that, that the stormwater management was going to be one of the first things done on this property. I assume it would be anyways because you have to pavement. But I just wanted some, some, something that made me feel more comfortable since it wasn't done when we first approved it. That's all. Thank you.
It will happen this time, ready?
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other planning board members who want to weigh in? Okay. So is this a public meeting? I'm trying to look.
No, it's a minor engineering change. You can ask it if anyone wants to weigh in.
I think we're probably going to just continue this, if that's okay.
Want a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of September 3rd, 2020.
Thank you, Ernie.
Second that, this mic.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Actually, let me back up for a second. Jim Decoulas, do you think you'll have the stormwater clogs and other information before September 3rd?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll continue. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving on and now we're moving to our matter of appointment. And the first matter of appointment is a continued public hearing, item 7A, a petition to amend this own bylaw Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to short-term rentals submitted by the planning board. Because we have such an aggressive agenda, I'm trying to keep things really tight. I'm allocating very short windows for each of these if possible. We got to get, we're gonna aim to have this done in 10 to 15 minutes. I'm gonna ask Kristin to give us a quick update and then I want to also explain how this is gonna move forward and then we'll open it up for questions and comments. Kristin?
Sure. So we went over this at the last meeting. We have a definition for short-term rental as well as a prohibition pretty much in the use table in principal and accessory uses proposed. The definition, I will read it quickly. The use of a resi, short-term rental is defined, use of a residential unit for residential occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not, may or may not be facilitated through a booking agent. A short-term rental is an occupied property that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed and breakfast where at least one room or unit is rented out by an operator through the use of advanced reservation. A short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, and condominium. So with that definition, that gets at for at least one room or unit is rented. So therefore that addresses either whole house or single room or single unit place. That was a question that came up. We are proposing to prohibit across the board as a principal use in all districts. We are also proposing as an accessory use to prohibit across the board. And the third thing that is newer, but a result of conversation with the building department and town council is we have an existing section, 4311, renting of rooms without cooking facilities, not more than two person in existing dwelling by a family or residence, provided there's no sign or display to advertise. And that was by special permit by the planning board. In order to reduce confusion, we are proposing to eliminate that section in its entirety. So therefore, some of the questions that came up at the last meeting, can we limit to longer than 28 days? Someone asked for six months. So what town council has advised us, that you can decide the length of time, but it must be around the 30-day mark. And where we have it at the 28-day mark is to ensure that it's not month-to-month, including, including February. And it also needs to make sure it doesn't conflict with tenant landlord regulations that are, as I mentioned at the last meeting, a complete other form of law. Where zoning itself cannot dictate ownership, meaning whether you own your house or you decide to rent your house. However, the state, the state statute has specifically carved out short-term rentals as a thing because it is essentially a commercial enterprise within a residential, residential district. So had the legislature not carved out short-term rentals as this thing, it would be difficult for us to do this because we would be in conflict with that ability to rent your house month, or rent your property, rent your house. But because the legislator, legislature took up this as a specific thing, they put a lot of, the statute is actually pretty long as to what you can and can't do and what, if you do want to allow it, how you can tax it and other areas, which we're prohibiting it overall, so we don't need to get into those issues. So, but anyway, so the statute gets at all the hotel, Airbnbs, all those type of things that are commercial enterprises. It does not cover a family renting a single-family home month-to-month, using it as a single-family home. So is there a difference between renting out rooms or whole house? As I mentioned, the definition itself covers whole house and individual rooms. Then there was a question about the other provision, which I doubt that we've decided to strike it. And then there was a question about enforcement options. So, and why shouldn't be a general bylaw or should it be a general bylaw? So for, as I mentioned in zoning, you can control the commercial type uses of Airbnbs through zoning. You can't regulate renting and licensing and collecting taxes through zoning. If you wanted to do all of those things, then you could get at it through a general bylaw. And we can also, if we decide to do that, we can do that at a later time. At this point, through the zoning amendment, then we get at the prohibition overall that it's not an allowed use. I'd be hard pressed to find any of these short-term rental areas that are grandfathered in. They can try to prove it, but I would, I, it's not really, it's never been allowed, so I think that would be difficult. So, so I think those were the basic questions that came up at the last meeting. I wanted to answer those. But otherwise, we feel that the provision that we have put forward is one that is very workable. It covers a lot of the issues that we have encountered and is definitely the first step we should take in moving this forward. This is the third or fourth hearing that we've discussed this, so if we, we are prepared and have prepared a motion for you to vote this evening if you are ready. You're on mute, Barbara.
Thanks, Kristin. Sorry about that. So as Kristin said, this is the third or fourth time we've discussed this. I think we're ready to vote. We've heard from a lot of the neighbors. I think we had a really productive discussion at our last meeting. I think we had a really productive discussion at our last meeting. I want to give the board a chance to weigh in if they have any specific questions, and then I'm going to see if anyone from the audience wants to speak. But what I'd really like to find out first, after the board speaks, is if there's anyone in the listening audience that wants to advocate against this bylaw change, because it seemed at our last meeting that everyone was pretty much on the same page, and if that's the case, then we should just move forward and put this to town meeting. So with that having been said, do any board members have questions or comments on this?
Paul, is there any way we can just not allow short-term rentals?
Well, that's what this does. This is not allowing short-term rentals that are less than 28 days.
I don't want to allow, I don't want to allow at all, because what people are doing...
We're not allowed to restrict it for less, we can't tell people they can't rent their house on a month-to-month basis. But we are dis...
I don't want to allow them. So renting your house is by right?
Yes, that's my understanding. According to Town Council, we've got to restrict...
I want that to be sure, because we're a residential town, and what people are doing is saying, you know, let's have a party, get together, they rent a house, and we see what's happened previously. It's very damaging to the neighbors and the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
To be allowing this kind of thing. I mean, we're not party city here.
We completely agree, Paul, and that's why we're doing this, but I think most people are not going to rent a house for an entire month, so that they can have a party one day.
No, so in other words, you can't rent a house for a day, but you can rent it for a month.
You have to rent it for a minimum of 28 days, yes. Because according to Town Council, we do not restrict a homeowner's right to rent their house out on a month-to-month basis.
Can I, it's Joe. I have a question to follow up on Paul's, actually. Do you mind if I ask it?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so Paul's got a, Paul's actually got a good point. Like, so what happens if they say, I'm renting it for the month, but I'm only charging you $100, or $200? So, I mean, which is what they would charge for a night? You know, so how are we supposed to, in other words, there should be something requiring a lease, a signed lease? You know, I mean, that would prevent, you know, obviously, not to be confused with a hotel, which rents them out for a night, but it's, in other words, I mean, somebody could say, I'm renting it for the month to them, you know, I'm only charging them $200. You know, I mean, maybe there needs to be a piece in this thing that, you know, requires them, if it's a rental and there's people in there, then they need to show that they're, you know, that this is a legit lease, that it's, you know, they've signed a lease, and it's one thing if you've signed a lease, and, you know, it was a one-year lease, and after that year, they didn't renew, and they went month-to-month, at least you can point to the fact that it's the same people that have been in there through a signed lease from originally, because somebody, you know, I mean, there's ways to get around that. They could say, oh, I'm signed, oh, no, I'm renting to them for a month. Well, how do we know how much they're charging? You know, literally, they could say, they could tell us, we're renting to them for the month, and they could literally only charge them $200, knowing they're only going to be in there for one day of that month.
So, Joe, this is Barbara. How would having a lease change their ability to do that? They could just have the lease be for $200?
They'd prove to us, they'd prove to us that there was a lease with real terms to it, that showed it was this much money per month, and it's a year that they're paying, and there's a legit, you know, deposit, and there's a lit, you know, they're doing it in a legitimate fashion.
My understanding is, Joe...
They could produce a document, they could produce a document to us that's been signed by both parties, you know, that shows that it's a legitimate lease.
So, Joe, that's where you get at the general bylaw provisions. We in zoning can't regulate the provisions and the mechanisms of how. We can prohibit it outright as a use. In order to do any other regulation of the use, then that needs to be a general bylaw through the Board of Selectmen. And that's why the question is, and why I'm leaving it open, that if we want to do those things, we certainly can. It's just not in zoning, that those restrictions, regulations on operations would exist.
Right, so if, right, so if we zone, so we could pass a zoning matter, but we could, in other words, how do we, you know, do we require anything to, you know, for the policing of this thing, then it's, you can put a zoning law into place that's impossible to police, whereas if there was a signed lease, then, you know, here's the lease. This is how we prove that we have, you know, in other words, I, this is, it falls a little bit short, because I think there's ways to get around. They can just say, oh, sorry, I didn't rent it to them for that. I rented it, I rented it to them for 30 days, or 28 days.
Excuse me, excuse me, I want to answer this question. My name is Lilia.
Wait, stop. So I don't know who that is, but we're, right now, we're taking commentary from the board members, and then I'm going to turn it over to the listening audience, at which point you can speak and you need to identify yourself, but we can't have people just jumping in right now, I'm sorry. Joe, please continue.
Yeah, so it's just, it's almost impossible to, you know, when we go without, you know, without a lease, we can, literally, they can say to us, oh, you know, I rented it to them for 28 days. They only happen to occupy it for two of those days, or one of those days, but, so then it's, then, you know, really to police that, we have to say, okay, well, what did you charge them? And to find out if it's legit, you know, they could say, well, you know, they could say whatever they want, but they could literally, they could charge him $200 for the quote-unquote month, when they knew they were only going to occupy it for two days.
Can't they still protect if they have a lease?
Policing, there's got to be a next level to be able to police these things, because that becomes impossible to police, unfortunately.
Right, though, my question is, can't they still do that? Even if they have a lease, they could still have the lease be for $200 a month, couldn't they?
Well, they could, but, you know, so is it legit, it's going to be, it's going to be a $200 a month lease? And we know when they hand us the lease, that this is, you know, I mean, then we at least have a lease that we can, that we can then look to see. Maybe they burn you for the first month, but you've just realized that that's not, you know, that's really not, you know, you watch the property, and you're going to realize very quickly that that is just a cover-up. But you've got evidence to show, okay, you're producing a lease that you're leasing for 30 days. I don't think there's a lot of landlords that truly, I don't think there's a lot of homeowners that are truly going to lease a house for $200 for the month, and we're going to know where else to bat. If it's written down like that, and it just doesn't add up, and we look at it, and we find out that these people aren't there for the whole month, it's only going to take one month to be able to find out that these people are, what they're doing is breaking the law. In other words, there's got to be a way to police these, and it's almost going to be impossible to police if they, you know, if, you know, if it's a...
Is that, is that something?
I like the concept. I'm fully on board with the concept. I think it needs to be stopped. It's just that, you know, there almost needs to be another level of this thing, and, you know...
But is that something we can do through zoning, or does that have to be handled through the general bylaw?
We cannot regulate operations, and we can't regulate rental versus ownership in zoning. The only thing we can do in zoning is clarify that the, define the use and prohibit the use. In order to get at the issues that I think Joe's getting at, and I think we all agree about, we need to take that next level of creating regulations and enforcement within the general bylaw through the Selectmen as the second level to this. And my point was that if we move this forward as a use prohibition, we can follow, we don't need to do them together, we can follow it up with those additional regulations in the general bylaw.
Thank you. That was my understanding as well. So it would be my suggestion that we pass this, so that we can then move on and bring it to the Board of Selectmen and get to those other regulations that can tighten things up a bit. Does that make sense, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it makes sense. We're good, we're also good with month-to-month, and I guess, right? So we're okay with people just leasing their properties out for a month at a time, and...
I don't think it's up to us, from what we're being told by Town Council, we are not allowed to restrict that.
So we're not allowed to restrict anything more than one month?
Right.
Correct.
Right, okay. So then I think it's, then we need to go to the next step and just, you know, create a bylaw that's going to be able to have some teeth, where we're going to be able to enforce these things.
But this is the first step. This is the first step. We have to vote on this, and then give town meeting to vote on it. So do any other board members have any questions? Okay, then I'd like to open this up to the listening audience. I know there was someone who tried to speak a few minutes ago. I'd like to allow her to go first, and please speak up, and please tell us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Lili Glomakova. I'm from, I'm renting in for short term, I rented before, in Airbnb. Address the question from Joe. He asked if somebody will book house for a whole month for $100, and how we're going to lease it. So I want to answer that it's possible, it will not be possible, because if somebody booked whole month for $100, the whole month will be blocked. This Airbnb application, or booking application, any applications they use to, so it's good police, and you can check it as well.
Well, you can check it if they do it through Airbnb, but you can't check it if they do it privately.
There is no other way to advertise. If like a business owner decides to advertise for one-day parties for $100 and make a lease for a month, how is he going to advertise it to big...
Well, I mean, on a large scale, maybe that's true, but the fact is, if people are in the networking, there may be other networking where people are, you know, I know that Airbnb isn't the only one out there. You can go on to, you know, these other sites that you rent out your properties, rent your own, you know, there's plenty of sites out there that will, that people are going to rent their property on a short-term basis, they can do it. I know down in Cape, they do it every, all the time, so a week at a time, weekend at a time, or two days, you know. Airbnb isn't the only way to do it.
Not only Airbnb, there are so many sites, Homestay, Booking, Airbnb, HomeAway.
HomeAway, yeah.
All blocking calendar. Nobody can, you can make any business if you block whole house for a month and charge only $100. Nobody going to do it.
Okay, well, thank you for your, thank you for that. Did you, okay, I think we understand your point. I'm not sure if you're in favor of this bylaw change, or if you are advocating against it. Do you have an opinion on that?
No, I'm in favor of this change, because it's, they say one-day parties, it's also bad for house owners. It's not only for neighborhood. I'm totally...
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members that would like to, well, first of all, before we do that, is there anyone in the listening audience that wants to advocate against this bylaw change? Okay, seeing no one, that's good. I'm going to propose that we should move it forward, then, since everyone is in agreement. If there are people, just a minute, if there are people that want to speak, we can give a few more minutes to this, but if we're all in agreement that this is the right thing to move it forward. Who is it that wants to speak?
Yes, Barbara.
Yes?
Hi, Barbara, it's Karen Levy.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I am good. And I apologize, I had chatted with Kristen, but I know she got a bunch of people talking to her at one time, so if it's not my turn, I can wait.
No, go right ahead.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm definitely in favor of the zoning amendment. I just have some concerns and would like to throw out for consideration. It's not something that needs to be decided tonight, it's just a thought. I think that it would behoove all of us to delineate between owner-occupied properties and non-owner-occupied properties in putting the all-out restriction against short-term rentals. I think it's very different when a property's been purchased as investment and is being leased out for a short-term rental without an owner on site to govern what's going on. I think it's very different if it's a room, or a group of rooms within an owner-occupied home. And the reason for my concern, I'm having trouble even completely spelling it out for myself, but I just don't want to see us go too far in that direction and over-correct this issue. You know, the primary problem has been large parties that have occurred in Airbnbs, and I know that there's a large contingent of folks over here in the Windmere area that have more than justifiable issues with what has gone on. I don't know how many other Airbnbs there are in town. I know that previously, if you searched for Burlington, under the various sites, you would find quite a few listings. I couldn't tell you how many are entire units versus rooms within a home. I just, it concerns me a little bit that, it feels a little bit like maybe something is being pushed through because of a couple of specific, very, very violent incidents that happened in one portion of town. And I think, I don't, I don't know, maybe some of the property owners would disagree, but I think we all seem to be fully agreed and aligned on the idea that a standalone property should not be rented for less than 28 days because of the party issues and all of that. When we start regulating what an owner cannot do within their own home, it's a little bit trickier to me, particularly when we talk about things like enforcement. I'm attorney, I'm not a real estate attorney, and I'm certainly not here to advise the store, but I can tell you that my hackles go up a little bit at the idea of a town board coming to me as a homeowner and asking for documentation with respect to someone residing within my home, whether it's short-term, long-term, paid, not paid, a family, friends, a visiting out-of-town nurse who needed a place for a couple of weeks, corporate housing for my company, you know. Again, we're talking about, I'm only differentiating with respect to rooms, portions of a home which is otherwise occupied by the owner. And you start to get into that gray area, how is it different if I rent out a basement apartment for 10 days to a visiting nurse, or Sally has her, you know, 19-year-old nephews renting around with kids on motorcycles, and they want...
I think we lost Karen. Hello? Karen?
Can't hear.
I can't hear her. Karen, if you can hear me.
Sorry. No, I just wanted to respond a little bit. We looked at that, we looked at kind of the, those type of things, and, you know, if some kids are living, you know, 20-year-olds living together, how often is it less than a month-to-month? And tried to look at that. There were some questions of, well, what happens if someone is just staying with me? I mean, if you have friends or family or somebody just staying in your house, that has nothing to do with this, it's just you have a guest. So, and it doesn't preclude anybody from renting out rooms in their house or their house month-to-month. If it's an older person who wants to rent to college students, they can do that month-to-month. So I apologize, Kristen, my computer went dead without giving me any warning, so if that was a response to my comments, I missed it, and I apologize to everyone. So just quickly, what I just meant, we took a look at kind of the, what that looked like in terms of people staying for less than a month, or older people who wanted to rent rooms in their house to college kids.
Right.
To help them out, but the, what difficult is, because I think we all hear what you're saying in terms of over-regulating or under-regulating, but it's really trying to figure out where that balance is, that we can actually have some sort of control over it. Because owner-occupied versus not owner-occupied, I mean, whether the person's there or not there is very hard for us to know, but we, in allowing it still to be month-to-month, opens up a lot of options, as well as, you know, and someone asked me through this, if I have a friend stay with me, is that considered? No, if you have people staying in your house, and they're guests, they're guests. They can, you know, obviously stay at your house for one day, three days, three months, who knows? But that's not considered under this, so...
And I just, I just think we start going down a slipper...
And I just, I just think we start going down a slippery slope. Um, and again, because I, I think we do have the ability to know whether or not a property is owner-occupied. I mean, the tax rolls, everything else should indicate, you know, a mailing address and the residence address. I mean, for example, I own two properties in town. They're both I live in one and the other one's rented out a year to two years at a time, so I, again, I have no issue with the whole Airbnb idea and the non-owner-occupied property, but I can assure you the town knows that I live on Sunnyside and that the other property I own is, is, you know, is occupied by tenants. And I think that that's information that the town has access to legitimately and easily. Um, I'm actually much more comfortable with that than the idea of somebody knocking on my door and asking to see a lease agreement.
Um, and. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This is Barbara again. So if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is you would like there to be a different provision that would regulate or not regulate owner-occupied rentals.
Correct. Rooms, room, a room or rooms rented out within a home occupied by the owner of the property.
And you would like people to be allowed to do that for shorter than a month?
I would like to not see myself prohibited from doing that. I have no short or long-term plans to do that. The idea of sort of a revolving door in my house has no interest to me whatsoever. Um, my issue is more, where do we draw that line? Um, taking it back to the example of a lease. Okay, so if it's $200 for the month, obviously that's bogus, but what if it's a thousand dollars? You know, what if it's a group of college kids? 50 kids get together and everybody throws in 20, 30 bucks. They've got 1,500 bucks and boom, they've got a party venue, 1,500 bucks for a night. Now we've got the town coming in and saying, what? That, that's not fair market value? That is fair market value. It just, it, it opens up, in my mind, um, professionally and personally, it opens up a whole can of worms to start dictating in any fashion what we as homeowners can do within our own property. And again, I'm, I'm right there with everybody else about the college, you know, the parties and the this and the that, but what happens, you know, if my next-door neighbor, like you said, has, they go out of town for three weeks and their nephew comes in and starts throwing parties? Um, yes, I can call the cops, just like we, you know, just like we did when there was parties over on Glen. You can call the cops, but that's, that's a one-time thing. It's, it's not the solution. It's not, it, it, I just don't think, I don't think that it is going to prohibit what we're trying to prohibit. And I do think it has the potential to prohibit things that we don't want ourselves as homeowners to be prohibited from doing, if that makes sense.
As to how to achieve what we're trying, I know, I can tell that you know what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah.
You have a suggestion as to how to better achieve that?
I, I don't have the language in front of me because my computer just blew up, um, but I, my gut says it would be within, uh, Kristen, when you read the, the wording of the, um, bylaw, it, it went into detail about a single, um, property or rooms within a property. It's, to me, it's about, um, widening or modifying that definition of the type of properties. Sorry, I think I talked over somebody.
No, I think they're back on this.
I think, I'm not sure how to proceed because, um.
I think, Barbara, if you or Kristen could send me, um, the language, I know it's out there somewhere. Um, but if you could send me the specific language, I could look at it and potentially offer tweaks, um, but I, I really, I think it will depend on how we define, how we define the, the premise.
Right, we are, we have a deadline because we're going to get this in for town meeting.
Yeah, can I ask a question about?
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Who's that talking?
Joe.
Who's talking?
I'd like to.
Joe, oh, okay.
I have a question to clarify what she's saying. So, so as long as you occupy it, you can run a boarding home. Is that what you're trying to say? Would be okay?
No.
If you occupy, you can rent out rooms to anyone you'd like to rent rooms out to at any, for any length of time whatsoever?
Uh, well, first, I mean, if you want to take it to the extreme, arguably, yes, because the flip side of that is if I live in it and for whatever reason want to help somebody out or do whatever, um, you know, help out my company, help out whatever, it, it's not so much about what I do wanna do so much as it is the idea of what I don't want the town telling me I can't do. I mean, I, I own these properties in fee simple. I, I, I mean, you can have guests. I don't, I don't need to run, I'm sorry, but please just let me finish and then I'll be quiet. I, I don't need to run a boarding, you know. All of these things are potential issues, but they're potential issues with me renting to, I can rent to, you know, five college dropouts for six months and this bylaw change isn't gonna stop me and all that's gonna happen is the neighborhood's gonna have to call the cops every week and a half, probably.
So what, so what happens, so what happens is the same thing that would happen here. And it's not like people are gonna be knocking on your door and asking for your lease. But the town would then, if, if it became a problem and it was a violation of the law, then the same thing would happen there that if you kept renting out and disturbing the peace in the neighborhood. There would be a lawsuit brought against you and you would have to present the documents to the court.
So why amend the bylaw? I, I agree, but that's, that's my point. If, if it's, when it comes down to things like disturbing the peace or creating a nuisance or trespassing or any of those things, that there's already property laws in existence that, that address those issues. When we start.
You asked me to listen to you and I, and then you butted in the middle of that.
I'm sorry, I, it's the way my phone cut out. I apologize.
Okay. So, so, so I, we, you know, you understand we need to make a law to address concerns. We're not the only community in the state that's doing this. You wanna pick, when you see a problem, you try to create laws that are gonna provide remedies to those problems.
Absolutely.
Now, look at the, I mean, maybe your scenario, you know, maybe it would work, maybe it wouldn't work, I don't know, but the fact is, would it, let's look at the scenario by which somebody owns a seven, seven-bedroom home. I mean, just because they occupy one of those bedrooms, do you think it would be, it's proper for them to be renting out to six different people every night? Just because they occupy one of those. So, you know, those are the scenarios we have to look at when we look at it. We have to look across the board. So, you know, maybe you have a two-bedroom home, I don't know. I'm just saying, maybe you have a two-bedroom home and you're having one person in at a time and you're living there and it's almost like a friend, but, but it's not. It's a rental situation. We, when you make a law, you have to make a law that, that addresses all scenarios. And, and if, you know, maybe one of them isn't as, as, as intrusive or maybe it's not as dangerous or maybe it's not, whatever, but when you make it, you make it to benefit the whole community and, you know, when, when, when we, when we, when we zone properties, single-family residents, it's single-family residents for a reason. You know, it should be single-family. And so we can't, how do, how do you say that we zone all of these neighborhoods as single-family residents, but yet we let multiple families reside in these properties at any given time? And that's, that's really, we're not doing anything any differently. We're only, we're only defining the laws a little bit more. It's a single-family residence, it should be treated as a single-family residence. You know, that, and that's.
I, I just don't see it as that black and white, Joe. I, I just, I don't see it as that black and white because everything you, everything you just described could also happen, but without money exchanging hands. And it's still the same problem for the town. If we've got multiple families overcrowding a house or, I, I don't wanna say the, the, you know, unsavory characters, you know, whatever you wanna call it. I mean, it, it's.
And that's fine, yeah.
Can I hear you for a minute?
When it's now a business, but now you're making it a business. So you're right. If no money changed hands, it would not be a business. And it is a residential area. So, you know, what we're saying is, we're not, we, we're not interested in, in making residential areas into businesses. And, and when I buy a house in a residential area, I don't expect that my neighbor is gonna conduct a business next to me and have different people in that house every night and charge them, because then it becomes a business. And that is not allowed in, in, in Burlington, to conduct a business in a residential area. So, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's wrong on a lot of different levels, in my opinion. This is only my opinion, but I try to conduct my house like I would like my neighbor to conduct their house. If I buy in, in a place and I keep my property up and I, you know, I, I, I have a single family, my kids are here, I don't want someone next to me renting out to anybody who wants to rent out over there and who knows what, you know, what their criminal backgrounds are or anything else. That's why we're not, we, we don't like revolving doors to be going on in these residential areas. You know, there's a reason for laws and, and laws aren't so I can knock on the door and ask for your lease. But laws are, if you become, if this house becomes a problem and it's not used the way it's contemplated that it's gonna be used, then it creates an issue in the neighborhood. There are recourses through the court system and the court's gonna ask you for your lease and show me that you're complying with the law. It's not like I'm, you know, the planning board's gonna knock on the door and say, give me your lease. They, we create laws so they can be enforced by the proper authorities, right?
Okay.
And, and again, you know, there are zones that you can, people can buy hotels. You know, you can buy a hotel, you can buy a, you know, a motel and you can have whoever you want going through the doors, but when you buy a single-family residence, you know, it's, it should be used as a single-family.
Can I break in here for a minute? Joe and Karen both, okay? I, I hear what Karen's saying. I think we hear Joe's response. This particular bylaw is just doing one thing. It is prohibiting short-term rentals less than 28 days. Anything to do with the lease and the terms of leases has to be handled separately. So I hear the concern. I wanna give other people a chance to weigh in. We have a really, really long agenda, so we can't, we've spent, you know, about 40 minutes on this. We're gonna need to move on, but I wanna make sure there are, if there are other people in the audience that want us to weigh in, I'd like to give them a chance to do that. So, anyone else?
I'd like to talk.
Okay, who's that? Please identify yourself.
Dave Miller, 19th Circle. I just wanna bring up, I just wanna bring up with maybe it's just an edge condition to make sure you thought about it. A number of years ago, we had a friend who worked for Baird Corporation in Billerica. And they would rent out, the company would rent out long-term, like a year or more, at like Lord Baron for business people who would come in. And so you might have business people coming in and out every couple of days, every couple of weeks. I presume they could also rent out a house somewhere. So technically, rental and lease is long-term, but they're using, but you're gonna have people coming in and out on a short-term basis. So maybe an edge condition, just wanna make sure you thought about it.
No, I think you're right, Dave, and it's possible that that could, and I don't think anyone is thinking that this change will be able to completely eliminate all instances of short-term occupancies. Um, but it is at least a step in the right direction. We've had a lot of really difficult situations for neighborhoods and we wanna try to adjust them as best we can. And I don't think this is perfect and I do think we may need to tweak it as we move forward and we may need to do a general bylaw as well. Personally, I think this does a lot and is a, a big step in the right direction. I don't think the work is done. But I do agree with you, that is certainly a possibility. Are there any other people that wanna comment on this? Okay, board members, um, there's been quite a, a robust discussion. Does anyone have anything they want to add before we move this to a vote? Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we vote on this as we had planned with the understanding that this is sort of an a job half-done. That we know it's not, um, complete and we're gonna need to move forward with the general bylaw. And I think people like Karen are gonna probably wanna have a lot to do with that when it comes up. It's gonna be, again, another long process like this one was, but, um, this has been, you know, this is, I think, our fourth meeting discussing this and we, we do need to move forward in time for town meeting. So I'm gonna suggest we move forward to a vote.
Chair, this is my, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Atamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Um, before we move on to the vote, I just, for everyone listening, want everyone to understand that what we are voting on is just a recommendation to town meeting. That's all. This will be town meeting's decision ultimately, powers.
Mike? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board recommends favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II, definitions in Article IV, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to short-term rentals.
Mr. Mike, I second that.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Atamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, we are going to move on to item B, um, which is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II, definitions in Article IV, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to self-storage facilities, submitted by Betsy Hughes and David, who are town meeting members in precinct seven. Welcome, Betsy and David. I know that, Betsy, you have a, a brief presentation you want to make to the board and to the listening audience. Um, this again is something that we do hope to vote on. I think we're gonna vote on this tonight, right?
No, it's the first step.
We can't, sorry.
First time we're.
We're opening, so we can't vote today.
Opening and we're continuing to the third.
Thank you. So, Betsy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, and Brady, I think you've got the, uh, the wording, but, Dave Webb and I are, um, pleased to, to the planning board tonight to propose two articles around self-storage facilities. One's a definition and the other is an additional, adding an additional category in a use table for that, uh, purpose. But we thought first it'd be good to give you a little bit of background. Uh, in terms of self-storage facilities, according to Business Now, for income-producing real estate, self-storage facilities are one of the easiest, least expensive and highest-yielding types of property with, and I quote, "high returns, low maintenance, employing only one onsite manager." The land is used, that is used is usually not desirable for other developments such as office buildings and apartments. Building costs are low with little plumbing, concrete floors, no windows, no trim, et cetera, and almost completely free from maintenance. Tenants move into the units with no involvement or oversight from onsite management and move out with no effort on the part of the owner. And if they don't pay, well, their things are just auctioned off and the unit is rented to another tenant. According to an April 19th Wall Street Journal article entitled, "Towns to Self-Storage Facilities: Please Go Someplace Else." Towns across the country are feeling overstuffed with self-storage facilities and are putting the brakes on further development. We saw this locally in Woburn when they elected to ban further development of these businesses due to concerns about devaluing neighboring properties, low tax revenue, and the lack of job creation. Even closer to home, in 2019, Jumbo Self-Storage purchased property on Blanchard Road, which is in precinct seven, near residences and on, and premier office space. They went before Planning Board and Conservation Commission for approval to build a five-story, 1,000-unit storage facility. It's huge. Visible from 128. So they like the ideas on 128 Route 3. The developers intend to flip this building once, so there is no evidence of their commitment to our community. If one were to look within five miles of our town, one would find that there are a number, actually over 11, storage facilities available to those who need them, and there certainly are people who do. I visited a number of those facilities and found none of them are fully occupied. In talking to the onsite managers, I heard a number of common stories. First of all, they always have room for rent. They often have retail in front to sell packing materials. There's 24-hour access through a gate. They have signs saying there's no hazardous materials allowed. However, there's no one there to monitor what people are moving in and out as to whether they're hazardous or illegal or anything of that nature. They do have cameras that monitor, but nobody's gonna check and see what's actually on and what are in the boxes that are being moved in. I inquired about the kinds of problems they've run into and I heard a number of stories. The ones that I'd share with you are about people actually living in the units because they. The ones that I'd share with you are about people actually living in the units because they do have bathroom facilities. And in some cases, they've stored their pets in there, which is, uh, something I couldn't quite understand. From a community perspective, we really need to care. Self-storage facilities tend to be unattractive, cannot be reused for other purposes should they fail, and devalue neighboring sites. The town of Burlington has gone to great lengths to attract biotech companies, corporate headquarters, and the development of premier office space. Why would we continue to allow land to be used by a business that detracts from all of those efforts? As there is no provision in the Burlington bylaws to preclude such a development, such as jumbo self-storage, um, despite the united voice of Precinct Seven homeowners, neighboring businesses, imploring conservation and planning to say no, they had no basis to do so. As Woburn has banned further development of self-storage facilities and Lexington's other towns don't seem to allow it, Burlington becomes an even more attractive additional development, or additional development of these facilities, should we allow it? Given all of this, Dave Webb and I, as representatives from Precinct Seven, proposed that these bylaw amendments to prohibit further expansion in our town of this sort of unfavorable development. So, uh, as you can see here, there are, uh, two parts to this. One is a definition, um, of self-storage facility. And the other is in the use table, adding a new category for self-storage facility in the use table for, both for primary and, uh, which is, um, there and then the, um, and we're banning it throughout the, each district of the town.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Did Dave Webb, I think, is present, did he want to add anything or are you just happy with that summary?
Uh, just quickly, uh, thanks, Betsy. I think, uh, she did an excellent job. And again, I'd just like to emphasize that these two articles we're recommending the town meeting are for banning these facilities in town completely. And I'd also like to point out that Jumbo started their construction this week. I went down and took pictures today and it's very typical of these, uh, developers. The land has been completely stripped. Many trees have been taken down. This is bordering out wetlands, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, they, they've just have, have gone around all that. Uh, so I hope Conservation Commission and some of the other boards in town will pay attention to what they're starting to do right now. It's gonna be a huge facility, five stories high. It'll be very visible from 128, which is one of their reasons for taking down the trees that screened it from 128. And of course, as Betsy pointed out, um, the many residences in this, in this neighborhood will be able to view this thing day and night, uh, in their backyards. So this is, uh, the, the main reason why, why we, we, this was the time to, uh, ban these facilities from town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, okay. This is something, this will be open tonight, but actually the board has been discussing it for some time. So I'm gonna just quickly turn to my board, other, my fellow board members and see if they have any questions or comments on this item. So raise your hand or give a shout-out if you wanna weigh in.
Madam Chair, this is Mike.
Hi, Mike.
I just wanna, I'm in favor, just wanna thank Dave and Betsy for being proactive on this. Very good job. Good stuff. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? No? Okay. Um, Kristen, I, it's my apologies, I meant to ask you the same thing. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, well, you'll notice that there's an article right after this that I will be discussing.
Yes.
Uh, no, I think this, uh, I think this is, um, pretty straightforward, um, defining self-storage and prohibiting it in, as a principal use as well as a, uh, accessory use.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, is there anyone, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or against this particular bylaw change? Please identify yourself.
Yes, hello, I just dialed in now. I, I'm a little late. Are you still discussing the, um, the Beacon Village recycle, trash recycle compactor structure?
We haven't gotten there yet.
No, we, we haven't, with this, right now, we are discussing, um, the zoning bylaw definitions for self-storage facilities.
Oh, so you haven't gotten yet to the trash recycle?
We haven't, no. We are still on Item B.
And I'm on time, I guess. How long, how long before you get to that subject?
I really can't estimate, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who wants to ask a question or make a comment about the self-storage facility bylaw? Okay.
I see this is to continue, right?
I'm sorry, is that Paul?
The motion is to continue?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Okay. If nobody else has a comment, I'll make a motion to continue this matter of the planning board meeting of September, September 3rd, 2020.
Madam Chair, second.
Brady, can you do roll call?
I can. Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Brady. Um, we are now moving on to Item C on our agenda, which is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two Definitions in Article Four Use Regulations to Address and Define Uses Pertaining to Warehousing, Storage, and Distribution Facilities, submitted by the planning board. Um, this is an, this is the first time we are discussing this item, so there will be no vote tonight. It will be continued and there will be other chances to discuss. So we're gonna get in, uh, an overview from Kristen, if she's available, to start us off. And it's possible that Kristen's been called away. Um, okay. Um, Brady, do you, are you ready to jump in on this or should we wait for Kristen? I can also try and give a quick summary myself.
Uh, I can jump in a little bit if you'd like me to, otherwise you are more than welcome to share your thoughts. Uh, but kind of stemming off of what Betsy and Dave from Precinct Seven had talked about with regards to self-storage, this deals more with, uh, larger warehousing, um, distribution facilities like we see with Amazon coming into local commu- communities, um, and wholesale trade. So it's car- kind of in the larger scheme of things, um, is related to this, for this article. Barbara, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. Um, well, yes, what this does really is it defines several different things in the bylaw that are not currently defined. Um, and it's seeking to, we, we basically trying to control where these things could, could locate in town because although, um, we don't necessarily object to distribution facilities as accessory uses in certain locations, we want, we want to is very large distribution centers locating it down in area, in areas that we find it appropriate. So Kristen has rejoined us. I don't know if, if, um, you heard what we were saying, Kristen. We were kind of winging it a little bit and I'm sure you're gonna do a better job. But, um, Brady and I attempted to give a quick summary while you were absent.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. So, uh, I didn't hear what you said, so I'll just, uh, restart. So what we are, this all started kind of with Betsy's proposal for, to define self-storage. And at the same time, I said, well, we don't really define storage. We don't define warehouse. We don't define just, um, the newer types of phrasing like distribution and fulfillment areas. So if we're gonna do that, let's do this because we really need to find, um, a place to neatly put all these things. Typically, previously, self-storage was in wholesale trade and warehousing, which, you know, is self-storage, wholesale trade, and warehousing, maybe, maybe not. Um, but without defining any of it, it's hard to tell. So as you guys have, anybody who reads the papers, anyone who knows anything about Amazon, um, there's trucks everywhere and there's distribution centers and fulfillment centers and everybody wants everything at their doorstep. And every retail space is trying to figure out a way to get it there as fast as they can. So, um, what we are definitely seeing is a trend toward, um, more of this distribution of fulfillment, um, where we used to see kind of these big mega warehouses where, you know, the container ship would come in, they'd unload it, they'd bring it to this mega place and then it would go to the stores. But what's happening now, it's these, going to these fulfillment centers to then go out, um, to the public. So just wanted to figure out how, um, what that is, what the definitions are, as well as try to figure out for us what, what works. Um, you know, I don't think we're looking to have standalone warehousing. I don't think we're have, even looking to have standalone large fulfillment centers. But in terms of pieces of space, um, I keep saying, you know, the Macy's space is 250,000 square feet. It's a huge space. If they came to us and said, can I use part of it to do fulfillment, um, of product? I think that's something we can consider, but I think what we really need to understand a little bit more is the impacts of, of these areas. I mean, in some places, it's straight to customer and a small box truck. And in other places, it's kind of a tractor-trailer load. So I think what we're looking for is to try to figure out the impact a little bit more on the, the kind of trucking activity and other activities around fulfillment centers. So we allow enough to make retail continue to work in Burlington, but not so much so that we're kind of more in a trucking situation that we're not looking to, to support. So, um, anyway, sign of the times, this is what's happening. We wanna be up to date with the zoning bylaw. So as retail changes and emerges, we're promoting the right things and finding, um, you know, not having, as Amazon's turning all the JCPenney's and Sears stores into their fulfillment centers, which thankfully our Sears store is already underway with the new plan, so. So that's that. I don't, I, I will have some more information on the third, on those impacts. I've had, um, some different people that I've reached out to that have done some of these projects have been kind enough to share some of the, um, trip and traffic generation memos with me. So that's, um, been very helpful. Um, and that's it. So I've worked with Andy in the building department to try to make sure that it works with their, um, uh, their coding and, um, regulations, so. So that's that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Kristen. Um, this is Barbara again, and I'm gonna quickly see if the board has any questions that they wanna ask, um, especially trying to clarify so that we know what information we might need to provide in the next meeting when we might be possibly voting on this. So, um, board members, does anyone have any questions they would like to direct?
This is Paul Barber. I just would urge Kristen to, or continue on, uh, investigating, gathering information on this, uh, since it's nice to try to at least be with the curve, if not ahead of it. So I'm, uh, glad that she's, uh, looking at this and I see that it's on our, uh, agenda for September 3rd. So maybe then or further on, we get a more, uh, she'll have more information and we can consider it then.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other board members? Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue. Is there somebody else?
Well, before we do that, I just wanna see if there's anyone in the listening audience that would like to ask a question.
Yeah, Barbara, Bill here from the board.
Oh, Bill, okay.
Hi, uh, Member Gaffney. I just, as I, as I read this, so we currently have things like that going on now, let's say with Kohl's, where you've got drop-off, at least for the Amazon, right? That's kind of an example of, of what we're doing there. And, and Kristen, that's probably an example of an accessory.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and accessory may be defined as something that's not the primary, right? If I, if I think of primary versus secondary, or accessory versus primary, I'm thinking 5149. So you could maybe think of having half of Kohl's be the fulfillment center versus it being, you know, which is a big space, right? Is there, is there an opportunity to maybe, um, scale that to a portion where, let's say, right now, the Amazon drops off are at the service desk to a particular size of the building or a percentage or something like that?
So accessory uses are 25% or less, um, so it's not 4951. But, um, but to the extent that we wanna think about that a little bit more, we certainly can. As I mentioned, it, it's, I, I think it's something that we want to explore and allow, but make sure we control how we explore and allow it.
Yeah, cuz it makes.
And that's why we're trying to find the right balance.
With the current situation, maybe, who knows, the future, it sounds like maybe the right thing to do, you know, for the health and safety of everybody as well. And that might be the way that the industry's going anyway, all industries, right? So we wanna get ahead of it. Um, is anybody else kind of capturing that from the surrounding towns or, or, you know, from, uh, from that you've seen, when you read that articles, is there towns kind of looking at that as well, with the first one out this one?
I think everybody's looking at it and I, I think everybody's in the same boat. We were just, we don't really define these terms. For Kohl's, it's just, they're kind of doing it. We don't have a definition of what they're doing. So I think we need to capture it so then we can understand it and then do the right thing. I mean, I think, and the question is, is it, who's the point? Who's the, are you going to Kohl's to pick up the thing you ordered? Or is there a truck going to Kohl's to bring it to your house? And that, that's different. And how is that different? And, you know, if it's, so we just need to understand those things a little bit more in terms of making it easy for, easier for all of us and people to come into Burlington to, you know, have more modern retail work, but we also, as I said, don't want tractor-trailers driving up and down middle of Sixth Avenue.
Or maybe even Lexington Street that, that are coming from, you know, somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Bill. Um, any other board members? Okay, are there any people in the listening audience that would like to weigh in on this? Okay, then I think we should continue this to the meeting of September 3rd, 2020. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is my, I'd like to make a motion. Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes. Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
All right, thank you, everyone. We are moving on now to item, actually, I think my items have been messed up. Is this item 7J Solar?
No, are you reading, if you're reading your printout, then the letters were all messed up in the printout.
Okay.
So it's Item E.
Thank you. Item 7E, a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article Two Definitions, Article Four Use Regulations, Article Five Dimensional Requirements, and Article 10 Miscellaneous and Special Regulations to Address and Define Uses Pertaining to Ground Mounted Solar or Rays, submitted by Rev. Lucian. Again, um, this is the first time we're having this on public sector and we will not be voting tonight, but we are going to hear a bit from the proponent and take comments from the board and from the public. I am going to ask the proponent, um, to remember, as we had discussed in our subcommittee meeting, that what the board is looking for from you is an explanation as to why this proposed change benefits the entire town of Burlington, not specifically this property owner. So when you make your presentation, if you could provide that information, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lou. I won't do a joke this time, although the last one went over so well. I do have a statement. Zoning bylaws are, uh, serious matters designed by serious people with an overarching goal, to protect the community. Protection can take many forms. Obviously, the intent is to provide for the safety and well-being of the residents and to attempt to be as proactive as possible. And some protections are purely for aesthetics, to protect the community in the context of value, both personal property value and then providing value to the community as a whole. And some protections are merely hedges against the unknown, and this is where we're coming from. This, uh, accessories in the front yard are forbidden, period. No recourse, no appeal. And this is where our objection lies to this blanket restriction. Our country was founded on a pretty simple proposition, that freedom shall be the driving factor in our lives and that arbitrary and unilateral rulings from on high without due process is tantamount to tyranny. The first shots fired for liberty will let loose the next town over. Yet I'll be willing to wager that several of those patriots carry clippings in their pockets. Yet I'll be willing to wager that several of those patriots carry clippings in their pockets, many of which would become the foundation of a pamphlet called Common Sense, where Thomas Paine railed against arbitrary regulation to hinder our liberties. We open this meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance to those principles, dedicating.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, could you give us a moment? Can you just stop for a second? Just let me interject, okay? I understand your passion, and I think it's wonderful. You're clearly a very passionate patriot. But we have a packed agenda tonight, and we need to concentrate in on what your specific bylaw change is about and how that benefits the entire town of Burlington. Could you please concentrate on that?
And I'm providing context, and I will get to the point of that very quickly. May I continue?
Can you, no, I'd like you to get to the point now. Thank you.
Very well. Multiple studies have shown that homes of solar power sell more than homes without. That's the value. On top of that, houses sold 20% faster than their non-solar counterparts. That's nationwide dip. Massachusetts numbers are actually better. It's better because the state sees the value in moving away from dependency on fossil fuels and investing in the creation of a new, modern electric grid. Solar is therefore proven to increase home value. And since the rising tide lifts all boats, the whole community is positively impacted by the increased proliferation of solar in the community. The New England region as a whole set a solar record earlier this year in May, when the region's over 180,000 behind-the-meter solar power installations produced an estimated 3,200 megawatts of power between noon and 1:00 PM on May 2nd. What this did was turn, almost turn off fossil fuel power plants.
Okay, sir. We really need to concentrate on this particular.
This is how the benefit we have. I mean, this is, as stores becomes more commonplace, it's just going to become more of a value proposition to the community. You asked how the town benefits from easing this restriction.
Okay. Let me just put, click and clarify, okay? What I want you to concentrate on is, we completely agree with you that solar power is wonderful. We support it. We support all alternative uses, I mean, alternative sources of power. This is very specific about solar panels that are ground-mounted in front yards. It's very specific. So we're not making some blanket restriction that's not allowing people to do solar. We support solar. So I need you to just hone in specifically on ground-mounted solar in front yards. Okay?
And applies. Ground-mounted solar arrays are solar. More solar is better for the community. If the problem with the ground-mounted solar arrays is visible, that's one thing. If the problem is that it's ostentatious, that's another thing. But the problem is that it's forbidden, just on a due process standpoint. Just straight up liberty. The customer has, whoever, whoever brings this, brings this up, and I just, I don't even know how to, I don't know how to answer your question without just sort of saying.
Okay. Let me ask you a question.
Bringing it up, then how is that served?
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Do you know of any other properties in town that this change that you're suggesting would benefit besides the one that did before us tonight?
What we did was, we just did a Google Maps overview of the property. So we didn't have, and we're using the GIS, so we do have property lines and what have you. We identified perhaps a dozen to 20 potential areas about this, but this is the point. It's not a matter of whether we want this, it's about whether the homeowner wants this. We didn't even reach out to these particular homeowners yet because it's not a point, what's the point in doing so? It's forbidden. The due process.
Reached out to the homeowners at Margaret Street?
Well, you're asking us to find other candidates to.
Okay. All right. I misunderstood you. Thank you.
Doing that when it's expressly forbidden.
Okay. I misunderstood you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
We found a few other sites where this is beneficial, but that's really not the point. The point is that there's no appeal. There's no recourse.
I understand. No. And I do understand that. Thank you. All right. So.
We'd like, can I just make a quick comment?
I don't know who's speaking.
Oh, sorry. That's Brian.
With Revolut Sun.
Yes. And you may make a comment. Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks again for having us and letting us be heard. Again, we just, due process and fairness is the basis, like you pointed out, the benefits of the whole community and changing any bylaw. So there is likely a small percentage of potential homeowners that would actually petition or attempt to have a special permit through this relax of the bylaw. But overarching benefits of the community is what Lou was pointing out in terms of, you know, offset of pilots, a bunch of value solar. We have a bunch of studies and things like this we can share with you as well.
I think, no, we understand the value of solar. So the value of solar is the same, whether it's located in the front yard or the backyard or on the roof. The value of solar is still the same, and we do not contest that. We completely agree with you that.
Right.
Solar has a wonderful value.
We, as an organization, never propose, and customers never ask for ground-mounted solar systems in their front yard because front yards are typically defined, as we all think of them, in our neighborhoods. So this would be a very unique example. And we're just, what we're saying is, for fairness to all residents in the community, if there was a, some of these residents that might actually have a non-conforming property that would define front yard as a place that they could have a ground-mounted solar system that they could petition, the planning board for a special permit is what we're asking.
Okay.
As you know, we have a, we have a particular customer, but this is a bigger issue for the community.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I would like to give Kristin a chance to quickly weigh in, and then I'm going to see if our board members have questions. And again, I want to make sure that everybody's not focused specifically on this property, but rather on the larger question. Kristin, go ahead.
Sure. I have a visitor in my office.
That's quite all right. He's a coming visitor.
Anyway, so there's three parts to this. It's the definition of use structure and accessory, the, which adds the end to this, the ground-mounted is not considered accessory. There's the dimensional criteria for front and side yards, that this shouldn't be considered an accessory in that context. And then there's the Article 10 amendment to solar. I, as I mentioned in the joint meeting we had last week, I wouldn't do anything to Article 2 and Article 5. Those are, those don't have anything to do with solar. Where the amendment should be is in Article 10, Article 1091. So if you're going to consider anything, I would be considering the 1091C amendment that is, what they're asking is for by special permit, that they, we consider ground-mounted solar as an accessory used in the front and side yards. As I've mentioned before, that, you know, this, we spent a long time with ground-mounted solar and looked at where it should be in the front and side, where, and had made a, I think, what, three years ago? Went to town meeting with a prohibition in the front yard. So I'm not sure with the one property that we have, that we had in front of us with Margaret Street, which is very unique, you can't see anything from that property. And I appreciate the applicants looking at different properties and trying to figure out if it may work there. I think the one question was asked at the joint meeting of the applicant, you know, why not roof? That we're, we are pro-solar. And it's just, you know, what change are we making that might affect, in fact, affect the whole town? So that's what I got.
Okay. Thank you. So, planning board members, I imagine everyone probably has something to say about this. So who wants to go first? No one? Is everybody good? No questions? No comments?
No, listen. You're no mouthy. Here I am. But no, I have an opinion on it. You know, we're going back to our founding fathers, and God knows, the next thing you know, we're going to be back to the millennium. But this is an issue that the town has a right to consider. And I take exception to anybody questioning our dedication to solar. And if not, take a ride down Blanchard Road and look at the top floor of the garage. And that was as a result of one town meeting member who's very interested in that, saying, you know, let's ask them to do it, and they did. So where we can, we have. But an issue that we were considering earlier has to do with Burlington being a residential community and the fact that we try to have a community that not only is a nice place to live, but aesthetically looks okay. So we regulate certain things that you could do on your property. We regulate where you can put your house and so forth. So this is a, this to me is just a case of regulation. The way we're looking now, you can put it all over the backyard. I think we said, you know, you can put it in the side, in the back, and so forth, and you can put it on the roof, but you can't necessarily put it on your front porch. So we'll have to determine that, but that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Paul. Well, actually, we did determine that. So this is Barbara, and I have just a brief comment, and then we can see if anyone in the listening audience wants to comment. My comment is what I, what I think we really need to remember is that this prohibition on ground-mounted solar in front yards was not something that was undertaken without thought. It was not capricious. We discussed it. We took public commentary, and town meeting voted on it. And that is why the prohibition is there. It's not, it was, it was well-considered. And I do not think that I would want to go back to town meeting and tell them that we think that they were wrong and that they should reconsider that because of one property. That is where I stand on this. I would like to know if there are any members of the listening audience that would like to weigh in on this. I see someone waving. John Nyler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Yeah, just a few points on this. Certainly, I love the idea of solar power. I would say I'm a little more alarmed about this than, after hearing the argument for it, than I was before. But I looked at the proposal. I'll just highlight that Article, the Article 4 proposal isn't on the planning board website, so I couldn't review that. The Articles 2, 5, and 10 are there, which I did review. On Article 5, currently, accessory uses are limited to not being in the front yard, not in the side yard, and only allowed to cover 20% of the rear yard. And that all seems quite reasonable to me. I, I'm particularly concerned, as I think Kristin mentioned, that the, trying to change this from not being, declaring this to not be an accessory use is just as a starting point overly broad. Because if something's not, if it's not an accessory use, that means that the, all those prohibitions go away. And it could be more than 20% of the backyard. It could be front yard, it could be side yard. And, you know, I agree with Paul that the idea of having the planning board being able to issue permits for these to show up in front yards is not something that I want to see. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I'm a town meeting member from precincts. The, so as with the Article 5 modification, the same issue comes up with Article 10. If it's declared not to be an accessory use, what is it? You know, one of the problems I see consistently, or I should say, from time to time in the zoning bylaws is an issue of things not falling into any definition, which makes it a little bit of a gray zone then. So if this isn't an accessory use, does that mean it's a principal use? Or is it just some third undefined use, which would be even worse? So I have a real problem with saying it's not accessory use. If we wanted to go forward with this, I would say the exception should be put in for solar as opposed to declaring it not to be an accessory use, which is overly broad and could lead to all kinds of unexpected effects. So I guess the other concern I have is, is that if this becomes something that is more open, it then means that the Board of Appeals can step in. If something's just straight prohibited, the Board of Appeals has no authority. If we look at the, I just looked at the zoning bylaws, and the specific use is that the Board of Appeals can decide variances, but they can't allow uses not otherwise permitted in a zoning district. So by having it prohibited, the Board of Appeals cannot step in and overrule the will of the people, quite frankly. And in having gone to a number of ZBA meetings, I can say they have a fairly liberal view of what a hardship is and have quite frequently allowed uses that are very clearly prohibited. But they decide it was a hardship and, you know, for instance, allowed subdividing of a lot into two non-conforming lots. And I've seen numerous examples. So the last thing I would want to do is throw this out there so that if someone is turned down, the ZBA can overrule it. So I think it's very, I think it's much more effective to have well-defined zoning bylaws where things are cut and dried, and quite frankly, where people can't argue individual cases and try to get exceptions. Because I think that does lead to, you know, a very patchwork situation where some, some people are able to get things and even, and others don't. And even though what I think is fairly clear in the bylaw, you know, those things can oftentimes be overruled. I think you're going to, for instance, take up something on signage here. I think the ZBA spends a huge amount of time, for instance, effectively overruling all our sign zoning bylaws. So I'd say we've got a very clear-cut set of rules here. I think, as you pointed out, they have a good reason for them. It's not like we're prohibiting these altogether. People can put them up in their backyards where they're, where the glare and other potential, you know, issues of how they look are less likely to be issues. And I think that's exactly how we should keep it. So I would, I would agree with the chair that this is something that the planning board should, should put their weight against as opposed to for. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay.
Yeah. Could I speak for a second?
Of course. Who's that?
This is Dave Miller, Gloria Circle.
Oh, Dave, yeah. Please go ahead.
We had the discussion at the planning board. I know there was a lot of things about aesthetics, and this is a comment. I'm a high-tech kind of person, and I don't find solar panels unattractive. And like I said, I'd rather see a set of solar panels ground-mounted than some of the junky stuff that I see in some of my neighbors' yards. But anyway, notwithstanding, what would concern me about front yards, and I want Revolut Sun to answer this, is what are the safety concerns? Which is obviously electricity being generated if it's out in the open in the front yard. How, what are the safety precautions?
Brian, you want it, or I can take that. The, all ground-mounted situations, all ground-mounted arrays are dealt with through underground conduit is delivering power back to the main panel when they are behind the meter. In other words, they're part of the homeowner's electrical infrastructure. Standalone systems are also underground, conduit fed back to a pole if they're, if they're on their own independent power generation. And there are a myriad of disconnects and breakers that are involved, including several underwriter lab requirements as far as the equipment, all equipment has to meet. UL 1741 pretty much drives this, but there are others in play too. But the key safety factor is all the conduits underground.
Thank you. And Dave, thank you for that question. It was something that we talked about when we first talked about ground-mounted solar, even in backyard. We wanted to make sure that it would be safe, you know, if some neighbor kid decided to climb on it or something like that. So it's, I'm thanking for the question.
Barbara, this is Ernie.
Yes, Ernie.
Just, just one comment. I know, I've been looking at this in a couple of ways, and I think maybe one of them is wrong, looking at it with just this one property in mind. I think the other people have said that we have to look at the whole town. It's too bad that we can't do something for this one property because I believe there's over an acre of front yard. because I believe there's over an acre of front yard here and it's 300 feet from the, from the, from its frontage, which is actually on Wind Street. But I, I don't think we can look at it that way. I'd really like to be able to do something. But I don't think that, having been on the board for a long time and seeing the board turn over and be different personalities and different people, I don't think we can leave this decision on future things. And that's what we would be doing it to five people on the planning board. So I would, I would kind of be in, in favor of not, not recommending favorably on this, sorry to say.
With all respect, the question came about.
Sir, wait, hold on. Are you specifically addressing, did you want to address the question, the question that Mr. Cavino just?
He just asked that this is something that you brought up too, but this is a, this is a one-off and we don't want it to be a one-off. There's no reason to act unless it benefits the town as a whole, that you're driving for.
Right.
I was, aside from the fact that I was at a kind of a disadvantage of purple is outlawed as a color and I would talk, how many other houses would benefit from purple? It's hard for me to say. I, but I do appreciate the rule, I do appreciate where you're coming from. I want to make sure that I'm not, I'm not coming off as unfeeling toward your, your concern. You do not want to make law to just benefit one person. How does that benefit anybody?
Right, thank you. I, I think what you also need to recognize is that this matter, the, the reason there is a prohibition on accessory uses in front yards is because the town of Burlington's executive, sorry, the town of Burlington. Thank you, Ernie. I, I had a brain freeze. Considered this. They gave it careful consideration and they decided that they did not want to allow accessory uses in front yards. It was, this is not an accident. It was purposeful.
Was there a specific prohibited?
So let me just see if there's anyone else in the listening audience that had a question. And if not, I think we're going to continue this to our next meeting because we're not going to be taking a vote on this tonight.
I understand.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
I would like one question. This is Carol O'Connor from Chandler Road.
Hi, Carol, please go ahead.
Thank you. For those houses that have been built in Burlington sideways, that actually have their front door on the side, what is considered the front yard for them?
The front, the street.
I think it's where they have frontage on the street. But there's, when it comes to solar in particular, side yards are also covered by this. You can have it in your backyard. I don't think you can have it in your side yard. So. Sure, that answers your question.
It depends. There are a handful of houses with, that kind of go on the side. But front, it's the, wherever you have your frontage, which is the 100 feet of frontage along the roadway. There are houses that don't necessarily have their front door on their frontage. Frontage is, if you have 100 feet on more than one road, it's usually the one that's the longest of the two. But it's certainly where you have your legal frontage is where your front yard is measured.
So that is somewhere in, in the bylaw that the front yard is considered the street side?
Yeah, it's in Article two and Article five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or can we vote to continue this? All right, great. I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, Ernie, you'd like to make a motion. Good, good, Paul.
Go ahead, Ernie. No, Ernie, go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of September 3, 2020.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Apemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Espio?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So Kristen, I understand we have a request from 108 Muller Road to take this item out of order. Is that correct?
We received a request two days ago that there was some older folks that I guess wanted to speak on behalf and we had it. Admittedly, it was very late on our agenda at the last meeting, so it's up to you as chairman, if you'd like to entertain the request.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can take that if, if someone would make.
Okay, I want to make a motion to take the item that refers to 108 Muller Road, not sure of the number, out of order.
Yeah, I'll find it.
I'll second that. This is my.
Thank you.
Item, item 7J. So then we'll do a roll call. Chairman LaRue?
What page?
It's the page. Do I really not have a page number?
No, she didn't.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry.
It's almost at the very end, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, go ahead, I'll find it.
Ah, sorry about that. Did I do roll call? Chairman LaRue?
Not yet, yes.
Vice Chairman Apemba? Member Clerk Raymond? Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Espio?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, so we are taking 108 Muller Road out of order, so.
Okay. So this item is a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Muller Road. Edward and Elena Yivitskaya are the applicants. What I want to remind all the board members of and anyone else who's watching is that we, this is pretty narrow. What we're discussing here is an amendment to the plan that is shifting the driveway. That is all we are discussing. We're not discussing the entire site plan and access and, and all the things that we discussed in the past. We're trying to keep this very narrow, just about this one amendment. So let's try to stay focused on that.
Barbara, can I ask for further clarification? If, if this fails, it goes back to the original approved plan, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Kristen, would you like to give a quick synopsis of what this amendment is about?
Actually, I would prefer, I'm, I'm happy to weigh in, but I would prefer that either it's attorney Levy
Okay.
or the engineer wants to just walk through the chain with you.
Let's do that, thank you.
Brady can zoom in as necessary. It's a, in, in order to see the thing, you have to be pretty far out, but in order to see the Cormier Road piece coming in,
Okay.
which he has, if you want to start there, we can do that. So I actually can hand it over to the applicant's attorney and then I'm happy to comment.
Mr. Levy, would you like to take this?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Brian Levy. I'm here tonight for the Yivnitskys and Mark Petro and his wife, Renata Yivnitskia. Also on the line is Alan Nelson, our engineer. And I'm not sure whether our title examiner made it or not. He was, he was coming from New York. I don't know if he made it onto the Zoom or not. But as the Chair said, the issue before the board is a very narrow one. And I don't know if we can expand even further the plan that is now up on the screen being shared. That's great. Okay. So we can see here, if we started Cormier Road and I don't know if you can, with your cursor, Kristen, follow the driveway, proposed driveway into the site. It goes straight, 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 and then it takes a bend, then it goes straight down into the new house lot. So the subdivision that the planning board previously approved provides for, for two lots, the existing lot at 108, with the home at 108, and then the additional lot, which you can see sort of the conceptual outline of the house where the cursor is, where the purple is. That's where the, the proposed home would go and the driveway would go from the, the home out to Cormier Road. And as the project was approved by the planning board, the driveway is not, as it is shown here, we're proposing that it be shown, constructed as shown here, 15 feet wide of pavement. It, it, it goes back and forth between, there are two 20-foot wide easements that are side by side. The easement that is in, in gray right now, where the proposed driveway is, is entirely on 26 Cormier. And then there's an easement adjacent to that where the cursor is now. And that as approved by the board, the driveway sort of goes back and forth between those two 20-foot wide easements. We're seeking just to have it within the one easement. And the benefit of that is it is going to save a couple of mature trees that are in this area. And it will also put the easement, the driveway, in a location where the easement does not appear to be in dispute at all between the parties, which are now parties to a lawsuit. The concern that was raised last time, the focus seemed to be on the question of if the, if the driveway is somehow is modified, does that create a danger of a cut through from Cormier Road to Muller Road? And as you can see right on the plan, there's no connection between the proposed pavement and the end of the driveway on Muller Road. So there's, there's, there's no pavement to get there. And currently, as indicated on the plan, there's, there are existing disturbances or blockages, I'll say, between the, 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 the Muller Road driveway and the proposed driveway. You can see where the cursor is now. There's a notation that says existing boulders and existing landscaping. So physically, between the boulders and the landscaping and the gap in the pavement, you can't get here from there. Now, what I wanted to do tonight was focus on the comments that were made at the hearing last time. And the issue was raised by some of the neighbors that somehow by, by modifying the driveway, that this might cause sort of open the floodgates to cut through traffic between Cormier Road and Muller Road. And what we did is provide you, because I, I think also, Madam Chair, you had some questions last time about sort of the legality that was here and that you were sort of unsure about this question. And we provided a title memorandum, which was submitted to you on August 8, and it was attached to my cover memo. And it explains that the, the slight shift of the driveway does not authorize a cut through. That the title research shows very clearly that only the Yivnitskys and the Russells have the legal right to use the right of way that we're showing here that's on the Russell's lot. They're the only two homeowners that can use that right of way. Both the Yivnitskys and the Russells have the ability to legally stop any cut through traffic that might want to go through there. Either one of them can do that. The slight shift in the driveway doesn't change who has rights to use that right of way. The title research also shows that only the Russells have the legal right to block the cut through just as they have done. Only the, the Russells can put the boulders where they are on their property and put the landscaping where it is on their property, cutting off that access to Muller Road. And that's exactly what they've done for obvious reasons, to disincentivize anybody from trying to do what they can't legally do anyway. Any complaints that the shifting of the driveway will lead to a cut through doesn't make any sense when the Russells themselves have stopped that cut through traffic and can leave it in place. So for the Russells or others to complain that moving the driveway is going to create a cut through just doesn't make any sense. Even if the Russells did threaten to remove the blockages, the boulders and the trees that are there, even if they did do that against their own interest, there's still no pavement connecting the proposed driveway and Muller Road. And my clients retain the right legally to stop anybody else besides the Russells from using that right of way. So shifting the driveway changes nothing. The title research also shows that only the Yivnitskys have the right to object to the Russell's blockage. They're the only party that can stand up in a court and say, that can't be there. And that's because they have the right to pass and repass over this easement. No other neighbor in the neighborhood can come in and say, oh, you have to remove that. They don't have the right to do that. So shifting the driveway doesn't create any sort of legal jeopardy for the town in terms of a cut through. As a matter of logic, it makes no sense for the Russells to do anything except to leave the blockage there where it is to prevent the cut through. And even if the Russell said, you know what, we're going to remove that, it doesn't matter because my clients still have the right to block and prevent any cars. I shouldn't use the word block. They have the legal right to stop anybody from going back and forth on that right of way except for the Russells and themselves. So I really don't think there's any danger here legally or practically of creating a cut through problem were this modification of the driveway allowed. Madam Chair, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Kristen, would you like to add anything?
Yes, so as mentioned, that what's in front of you is the shifting of the driveway and the utilities underneath it. So previously, I mean, if you look at the, the bend that's shown, it was more of kind of a straight line through, from Cormier Road toward this property. Now it's completely within the easement. So what you're looking at is that shift. What you need to look at in terms of your jurisdiction under subdivision control is really how the, how the access here, as you looked at it before, the, the proper access. They're not building out a road, so you're looking at a merely access issue. Is it safe? Is it, is there any public safety concerns? Is it consistent with subdivision rules and regulations? Are there any new waivers associated with this change that there wasn't considered in the original, which there are not? And, and kind of weigh on that. So what has come up is this kind of title question. I did have a conversation with Adam Costa from Council's office today and he probably went through way more, but just certain case law. You know, what is the responsibility of the planning board to weigh in on this, you know, in which easement is properly recorded or not? So the questions really in front of the planning board are, is it consistent with the planning board rules and regulations? Are there any public safety concerns in those? The title issue, you know, as much as we have the background information, I think it's valuable, but that's not the direct question in front of the planning board. However, you know, you certainly can take it into account, but it's not, not the question for which you need to be asking yourself as to if you're going to vote yes or no in this situation for, for this modification to switch it over kind of 10, 10 or so feet toward 26. So what you can do, so if, you know, you have to ask those questions when determining how you want to proceed. But we also are looking at, we have this access from Cormier. We did have those two trees that were close to the easement on the other side that I know we were worried about originally. This does move it further away. If there is an opportunity for us to figure out any additional conditions of the drive and or screening and or arborvitae's or other types of changes that might help enhance the access point going through this area, I think we should be thinking about that and considering that as part of this change. It's, you know, possible to vote, to vote in favor of this but add some conditions to help alleviate any, some of the concerns in the neighborhood. The, you know, I mean, a, a no vote would, I mean, it would essentially go back to the original subdivision. It's, a no vote doesn't not have, allow this to move forward. It just goes back to the original plan. And if you chose to take no action, I mean, it could be constructively approved, but you know, under COVID, that's 135 days after the state of emergency is lifted. So who knows when that is. So, and we typically don't recommend that, you know, you take no action on something. But just letting you know of all of your options that we're looking at here. So anyway, those are the things I want you to think about in terms of how you want to consider moving forward on this application. You did vote. You did vote 6-0 on the original subdivision.
Kristin, this is Barbara. I have a question for you before we turn it over to the board. A question that member in Pemba raised earlier today. Did you have a chance to ask town council about the appropriateness of us taking this matter up when there is pending litigation between the neighbors?
So you certainly can. They certainly can submit an amendment to a subdivision. It's within their right to do so. You certainly can take it up, but, and that's why I was moving through kind of the reminder of what is it that you're looking at? You're not making, you're not taking a certain action because there is litigation and/or isn't litigation. You're taking a certain action because you're looking at what's in front of you and determining if that change or modification is consistent with subdivision control and/or has any other public safety concerns that you want to address and with or any other, you know, neighborhood concerns that you could address within this change. So the appropriateness, essentially, it's a separate matter. I know it seems a little bit uncomfortable because I think some of you feel that you're kind of in the middle of two parties, which you are. So, you know, but in terms of your jurisdiction, what you're looking at, they are separate.
Okay, I understand that. Just for the, for the board, I want to just press a little bit further. I understand it is appropriate for us to take it up. Is it also appropriate for us to... until this matter is resolved between the neighbors? Is that also an option?
Can I?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I assume you were asking the board.
Yeah, so I, just to clarify, when I spoke about the litigation earlier today, I wasn't alluding to the fact that it was inappropriate, you know, that it was inappropriate for us to take action because there's litigation. But, you know, what I was saying was, is it necessary for us to take action during litigation? Or should we just, as a board, decide to allow it itself to be litigated? You know, and let the courts decide which way, you know, what would be the most appropriate way for them to go? You know, I, you know, I don't, I think we certainly... intervening, it is in the court.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, Joe. So that's something else that the board should consider as we weigh this. Okay. All right. Okay, board members, I'm sure everyone has questions or thoughts that they want to share. Who wants to go first?
Oh, no one.
If nobody wants to go first, I'll give you a scary story. I parked at Macabre basket a while ago and just walked up to find 108. I finally did and started walking down that driveway. And I could not, I was very concerned about it, about the width of the driveway. It is well paved, but it's narrow. And I wondered about, you know, a fire, that big fire truck going down there? So I started to walk down the road and low and behold, it's completely blocked off. There's a huge truck down there with a big thing on it, cutting trees. They must have been up 30 or 40 feet. There are some big oak trees there. And there's no way you could walk, even walk around. And I said, "I could envision something blowing up on the other side of that truck." And I said, "That was exactly why I should have voted against this." It's really scary down there. I mean, if that driveway gets blocked, you know, you're going to end up running hundreds of feet of hose or running people around through. I finally went by, I went through somebody's yard and walked around. But as far as I'm concerned, just as soon as the courts take care of it or whatever, I think we made a big mistake, or I did. I don't often advertise my mistakes, but voting for that originally was a big mistake. But that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other board members have any questions or comments?
A procedural question, Barbara. How long do we have to make a decision on this? What's the statutory deadline? Well, that's been changed by the virus thing, right?
Yes.
Kristin said, "Sorry."
It's okay. Well, since you're speaking, Ernie, what is your feeling about whether or not we should proceed?
Well, what we, refresh my memory, what we approved was access from Cormier Road the last time?
Correct. This is just talking about shifting the driveway. Correct. But the reason that is kind of relevant is because if the highway is not shifted, there is question as to whether or not that right-of-way exists or is clear in the position where we originally approved it.
Okay, so this eliminates that question? Is that what you're saying, Barbara? You've studied it a little more than I have.
If this shift is allowed, as I understand it, it eliminates that question. But it presents a burden on that neighbor.
Okay, because the right-of-way itself is being challenged in court, I believe. Is that correct?
One side, yes. But if we shift it and sort of one neighbor is bearing the full burden as opposed to the other.
But the question is in front of you, is the access, so is the access that was originally proposed feasible to access the property safely? And to the standards that we approved it? Does this change, change any of that? I mean, that's really what's in front of you. And if the shift is problematic or there's anything, you know, just as I mentioned about screening and others, is there anything you might want to add additional conditions based on the testimony that you've heard from abutters? You can certainly entertain that. Since we didn't have the, I mean, a lot of the struggle here is that the shift to Cormier, we didn't get a lot of neighborhood input originally to be able to entertain those particular potential conditions that we can entertain right now. If you vote yes with those conditions, if you vote no, it's just, you're not approving this modification.
But if we delay voting until after the litigation is completed, as long as that doesn't drag on so long that we come up against our deadlines, we could still implement those, possibly implement changes at that time?
I mean, potentially. I mean, you might, if you delay and this COVID emergency is declared over and 135 days pass, you're going to get what you see now without any conditions. You're just going to get what you see on the plan. If you delay, I mean, council has said that we should, they do not recommend delay just because you're waiting for litigation. There should be some sort of reason that you're contemplating the project itself as to why you need additional time.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If, so if the board, and I'm not saying the board does feel this way, but if the board feels that it's unduly cumbersome to move it onto the neighbor's yard and use that easement, then the appropriate action would be to let the courts make a decision. Maybe the courts decide that the other easement, the one that we originally, you know, had approved them using, is appropriate. Right? And if the courts decide it's not appropriate, then we need to make a decision. But at least we know that, you know, the other avenue has been cut off. Right? So, I mean, what's the harm in letting them litigate that? Because it, you know, if the courts decide the other one is appropriate and it's fine, then we're not burdening the neighbors.
True. Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other board members want to weigh in here? I'd like to hear what everyone else is thinking.
Madam Chair, this is Brenda speaking. I think I'd like to wait until after they get through litigation, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have an opinion on this?
Madam Chair, do we have any abutters that want to speak on this?
I definitely want to hear from them if they're here. Thank you, Mike. Yes, I just wanted to know if you all, I think Bill's raising his hand. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, so thank you, Barbara, Madam Chair. I think I mentioned it last time that I wasn't comfortable with the litigation. I think to Joe's point that, you know, let's find out what is legally allowed here versus voting on something that may or may not be. And so my question would be, first of all, I have questions to the plan because I know we're just talking about the right-of-way. So we approved the plan with the house being where it is right now with the purple line on it? Is that we approved?
You did.
We did, okay. We didn't, I thought we approved the one on the left with the frontage that was on Muller.
The frontage for this lot is on Muller as well, or not as well. It's just the line is drawn a little bit differently, but...
Then the Board of Appeals had to go through another appeal for this particular lot to have the frontage on Muller? The right lot, because they, from what I understood, the left lot, that 108, right, which says 59-29-0, that was where that house was going to be because they had the Board of Appeals approve the frontage on that lot. Right?
That was the original plan that was approved by the Board of Appeals, yes.
Right. In that particular lot, they gave the variance on the frontage for Muller. Now, we're talking about this one on the right, which is a different lot.
So they're the same amount of lots that have been reconfigured?
So they've been reconfigured, is that the reconfiguring? Does that make it go back to the Board of Appeals to give another variance based on the reconfigured lot? Or do they, they say, "Well, regardless of the configuration of the lots," I would think you'd go back to the Board of Appeals to find the reconfiguring lots that the Board of Appeals approved on the left, the way you figure now they're going to the right? Wouldn't they have to start all over?
In some cases, yes, they would. And I'm not sure if that was something that has been done yet.
Yeah, so I would say, based on, you know, where I came in on this one, and we didn't give the neighbors a chance because they went from the left road, which, you know, I was the neighbor over on Cormier. I say, "Who cares because it's going up Muller?" And all of a sudden, it switched midstream without them even knowing. You know, now this looks like completely different. The house is going to be in the guy's backyard versus over here. I think what you got to do is you actually have to go back to the Board of Appeals to get the frontage for this particular lot. And then even, what we probably want to do at that point is to recommend to the Board of Appeals what we may want to say there because of what the unintended consequences of doing that might be. When they made that decision on the one on 59.29-0, they may have not considered that you're going to go up Cormier because the frontage was on Muller. So now, it may be a different decision, or we may want to recommend to them what happens when they do decide on these type of things and the unintended consequences of that. So I would say, you know, we may want to just leave the applicant, leave without prejudice, you know, have them go to the Board of Appeals again. But maybe we can get a little bit closer to our Board of Appeals and have them understand what happens if they approve that with the frontage on Muller, if they can even do it on that lot. Because how it looks like the frontage might be on, well, it can't be on Cormier. You know, how they reconfigure the lots that wouldn't be what's recorded. So I wouldn't be comfortable voting on it. I'd just say, let the courts take their way they do it. And I wouldn't wait to 1:35. I would say, you deny it, let the courts figure it out and they can come back, right?
Deny the amendment? Because if we deny the amendment, they don't have to go to the, well, they have to go to the courts to mitigate. Okay, you're right.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I would say.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Is that right, Kristin? If we deny, they have to go, they're going to have to go. They don't get this, so they still have to figure out.
Well, if you deny the amendment, then you have a decision that's appealable. So, I mean, they could, right now, the abutter has appealed our decision, not the applicant. So right now, the abutter is appealing the decision of the planning board. If we denied the application, then we could also, I mean, they could, you know, they could appeal if they chose to. And then we would directly, it would be the applicant appealing the planning board decision. So I didn't put, I didn't have, I don't have a decision drafted in your, we had kind of thought of getting to one, but based on some of these questions, I was, I wanted to get a little bit more feedback from the board before really understanding the direction that we need to go in with this. So I'd like to hear from the neighbors a little bit more. And I think some of the feedback that you've given me, I can help tease out some of these questions a little bit better in a potential decision. I would like to understand a little bit more as we talk with the abutters, what, you know, if this was to move forward, if there was anything specific that should be included. I understand that the neighbors are kind of frustrated that this is, has moved forward, but just want to understand all angles.
Yeah, I would say, when that goes back to the Board of, it should go back to the Board of Appeals. So if, let's say, the Board of Appeals, again, proves it for some reason, even though we might give them more guidance on this, then the abutters can appeal the Board of Appeals decision. So you kind of back it up versus putting it on the planning board at that point.
Well, I will say, the planning board wrote the Board of Appeals a decision when this was in front of them recommending to not approve it originally.
Maybe they can do it again and have maybe the chairman, whoever it is now, in front of the board just to make it more clear of the unintended consequences or something like this. Because maybe they weren't, you know, they, I've been on the Board of Appeals a whole time. And, you know, what you, what, they don't necessarily see, they get a letter from the planning board, but if, you know, if we can provide more information, say, "Here's what happens if you do that." At that point, when they approved it, it was going up Muller. They didn't know that actually switching and going up Cormier would impact two neighbors that now they get a house in the backyard, you know? I think it should go back to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Bill. I think it would be a good idea for us to hear from the neighbors now, if they're present.
Yes, this is Joseph DeAngelis in Rosemary DeAngelis. We live at 24 Cormier Road and directly next to the Russells. We've been here 54 years. And we found out that we have a, an underground stream on our property by accident when we went from the Burlington sewage and we got water there. And we definitely don't approve of anything that they're doing to try to make a road to go through the Russell property.
It might disturb that water.
And more than likely, it will disturb the water because we have the pond right there. And nothing that I've heard since it started, that nothing is referred to that pond. That pond is a very, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's it's a big concern for us because of the natural stream.
Sir, can you say once again, are you 24 Cormier?
Right.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other neighbors present that would like to speak?
I would be happy to speak. It's on a butter in Woburn, 28 Stonewall Drive. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, Bill made some good points about, it's almost like this, the applicant backed into the original approval. And then even Kristin had mentioned that there wasn't a lot of opposition the first time around. Well, that's because there wasn't notifications that went out to the abutters, especially on the Woburn side. And I am a direct, directly affected by this house and this proposal because it is my backyard. And the gentleman that at 24 Cormier just mentioned, the pond, and that isn't even in the picture of any of these drawings that are here. And I just feel as though that's one of the key... And I just feel as though, that's one of the key things that's going on here, is that the view for all of us neighbors that have, you know, been here for 50 years, appreciated the, you know, what's there, and now all of a sudden, we're putting a driveway through two neighbors' house backed onto, you know, another house, a new house being proposed there, and then butting up to even my house now at this point. And I just feel as though this is gonna go back to the Board of Appeals in Burlington. It seems like everything was backed into the, how the applicants got here, and there wasn't the right voices that were heard at the beginning of this all started. And here it is now, I'm having my second opportunity to voice this when this has been going on for months and months. I just heard about this about two months ago. So, that's all I have to say, I'm in opposition of this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, could I get the caller, the speaker's first and last name, please?
Of course.
Michael Duddy.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay. Any other neighbors that are present?
Hi, this is 26 Cormier, I, we do have a few remarks to make, but I believe there's at least one other neighbor that I wanted to make sure had a chance to talk, our lawyer is also present and would like to make a couple of remarks regarding the safety and the zoning issues also. So Rachel Bame is on the line, we'd like to give her a chance to talk. And I believe Wilder McGuire is an abutter on the Kelly Farm side, we'd like to have him talk if he has a chance.
Everyone will have a chance, did you want to go first, or do you want your lawyer to go first?
Just as soon as the lawyer went first.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great, my name is Rachel Bame, B-A-I-M-E. I'm the attorney for Neil and Suzanne Russell at 26 Cormier Road. I, I've been listening to what has been said, this is my first time appearing in front of the board, and I just wanted to say hello to the Madam Chairwoman and the members of the board, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak, I know it's a long evening. So, I agree, this, this has some issues, it has, you know, some sort of cloudy variance at best, based on the fact that the variance was granted, granted to allow for limited frontage for two lots on Muller Road, never even considering the fact that these two lots don't have any frontage on Cormier Road. And then, you know, as you know, and as you've heard from others, the plans were changed, and it was suggested that the access to this lot that we're talking about now go out Cormier Road on an easement. Originally, the driveway was located outside the easement, now we're, you know, asked, the board's being asked to consider the easement being moved into the easement, and that's what's before us. But it doesn't change the fact that that lot has no frontage on Cormier Road, which raises several different issues, just practically speaking. I mean, there's, where there's no frontage, there's no opportunity for a mailbox, or trash barrels, or road, you know, yard clippings, things like that. So, there are some practical things to consider, and I'm not sure, I heard council say that they're looking to the neighbors to suggest, you know, arberitee, but none of those suggestions, well, they're premature now, but none of them would really solve that problem. The original application from the applicants for the ZBA was, you know, they asked for access out onto frontage and access out onto Muller Road, just for this purpose, so that a second road wouldn't be created. And also, the plan that was before the ZBA obviously showed two lots subdivided, limited frontage, but the frontage was on Muller Road. And as I said, there's no frontage on Cormier here. So, you know, I think at this point, it's sort of, if the planning board were to make a decision based on this application, they're sort of doing an end run around what the ZBA decided. And the ZBA never had an opportunity to look at the current plans or make a decision on frontage based on the plan that's now before the planning board. You know, with respect to the application that's in front of the planning board now, the planning board has serious considerations, some of which were already raised. This is a very narrow driveway, it's far below the requirements of the zoning board for, you know, public safety, there's no room for fire trucks, there's no turnaround. Also, serious considerations about water runoff, they've been raised by the neighbor, there's an aqua four that runs underneath this, or here, or close to this lot, there are significant stormwater runoff issues. So the planning board really has a lot to consider. As I said, I wasn't in the prior meeting, but, you know, those, those should be revisited. And I just, you know, as also mentioned, this isn't litigation, there is an appeal of the prior decision, and at this point, it's up to the court to decide. But I think what really needs to happen is, we're all operating under, you know, the assumption that the planning board's hearing something that's already passed through the first step, which is to go to the ZBA and get a variance for frontage. And while that did happen, and that step was taken, what's now before the planning board is so significantly different from what was before the ZBA, that I really think it's appropriate for it to go back to the ZBA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate that input. Did your client also wish to speak at this time?
Yes, Neil and Sue Russell, and again, try to be brief about this, but there's been mention from the planning director and others about the safety issues. And we just point out again that this amended plan still does not address several significant safety issues. The, I'm sorry, the subdivision rules strongly recommends 40-foot access to a property that has no frontage on an existing street, also recommends a 50-foot turnaround be created for any such lot. None of those are present on this plan. In addition, in addition, the, the area in front of 108 Muller, if, if a truck was to somehow come up this new proposed driveway, they would have to back down the driveway onto Cormier Road, or drive across the lawn across the existing Muller Road driveway out that narrow road. And as part of that scenario, I would just point out, the neighbor routinely parks four vehicles in front of that house, there is no way a truck could get through there on a normal day, through the yard and out the Muller Road side, or from the Muller Road side, in fact, to this new property. So, this, this, this plan, the amended plan and the plan this is based on, do not address any of those safety concerns. I think someone had mentioned from the planning board that creating this property is almost certainly going to create future litigation. I, it's maybe not relevant in some ways, but it certainly looks like it would. And I guess my final remark would just be that, that the board members have, over the month, expressed significant concerns about this property and regrets even about the way this was handled. This is an opportunity to sort of do the right thing, potentially finally hear what the neighbors have to say and take this into account. And we say, please don't create the most bizarre lot in Burlington.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I understand there's one more neighbor that would like to speak, and then I have a question for my board. So, is that neighbor here?
Yes, can you hear me, Karen?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Panduranga Varada and Amrutha Wali, we live at 30 Cormier. We've moved into this property five years ago, and we've been neighbors to the 108 Muller Road as well as the 26 Cormier, the Russells. I have expressed our, you know, dismay, dissatisfaction, and concerns at the last meeting, and I have given a document to all the planning board members, what are the ramifications if this goes forward, creating a driveway from the Cormier side? And also, the effects on the wildlife and fauna and flora? And as my neighbor on the Stonewall site, that urban neighbor pointed out, this creates a big bizarre lot in the backyard for him, for me, and for Russells. And I've heard from many numerous neighbors who could not make out, make it here today for this meeting, that this is not in the best interest of the neighborhood from both towns, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have a question for my board. I think that Bill makes a very good point, and I'm wondering if my fellow board members would agree that we might want to take a step back and ask our staff to consult with town council and find out if we can send this back to the Board of Appeals for a second look now that access has changed. I'd like to hear from the other board members, if anyone else would like to take that route.
I like that idea, I'm sorry.
Barbara, this is Mike, I'd be in favor of that idea.
I would as well, thank you.
So Brenda and Mike are yes, I think probably Bill is, because it was his idea. Joe?
I would be, I would be in favor as well, this is Joe.
And Ernie?
I'm, I'm not sure, I guess we'd have to ask staff to look into it, because I'm not sure of the procedure on that. Would we actually be making an application to the Board of Appeals, or what?
My suggestion was that we ask staff to consult with town council to see if it would be appropriate for us to have it go back to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, that, okay, so we're actually asking a question of our legal counsel, that's fine, that's fine.
Yes, okay, and Paul?
I have stayed.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion, am I allowed to make a motion by myself?
I'd ask for one anyways, yeah.
I'm gonna ask for a motion, as I stated, to ask our staff to consult with town council to understand what the proper procedure would be and whether or not we can send this back for a second look to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, well, it's not for, I don't think, it's not for us to send back, it's just to look at the process and the approval to ensure that if it does need to go back, that it does. So, I'd guide that process. So, well, we'll take a look at that, as well as the questions that have been brought up about potential actions by the board.
Okay, so if that's, that seems to be what, the big question that our board members all want to have answered. So, I think at this time, it would be appropriate for us to continue this matter so that we can get more information from town council about this.
You are correct, I would say you are correct. So what do we need, two meetings, or just the next one, do you think?
I think it's gonna be difficult for us to get the answers we need before September 3rd.
So. I'm also unavailable on the 3rd, so the 17th is.
Okay, so let's continue to the 17th, may I have a motion to that effect, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impumba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much, I know this is a very difficult situation, we're trying to do everything, and I understand it's probably frustrating that it's taking a long time. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we are moving on, we are going back now in our, on our agenda, back to, again, I don't have the correct letters on this, I'm looking at continuing public hearing for 207 Cambridge Street.
Which is F.
F, thank you, item 7F, is it continued public hearing?
No.
Okay, petition to rezone property to the general business district 207 Cambridge Street submitted by the planning board.
So again, I apologize, there's no page numbers, that is frustrating. So anyway, this was brought up a couple of months ago by a planning board member, and just to think about this property, the auto parts store was leaving the site, and to make sure that we just wanted to get the right mix along Cambridge Street, as well as the downtown area is generally, general industrial. The first half, the first, the very first piece of this building is zone general business, the back half of it is zone general industrial. The proposal is to take this entire site and zone it general business to attract a mix of more town center type uses of restaurants and retail and other type stores, and discourage some of the other type stores, such as warehouse and wholesale and other types of, that type of IG-based business that we'd like to encourage more BG business. So, so we recommend, this is the third hearing, we've talked, at least third hearing, we've talked about this. We have reached out to the property owner. They are currently marketing three, they've broken this up into three separate tenant spaces, they are looking for uses. All of, so because it's within the town center, all of the uses are allowed right now, the restaurant and retail and those type of uses. However, the underlying zoning district would allow for warehousing and wholesale trade and other stuff that we kind of want to discourage, so that's the reason for the underlying zoning district zoning change. So with that, we can talk about it among the board, we've talked about it a little bit so far, but we do have a motion for you to move forward if you so choose.
Thank you, Kristen. This is Barbara again. Board members, who wants in?
I could talk a little bit on this for a second, anyway, I'm the one who kind of had, you know, the proposal. You know, if, so this is Joe, I'm sorry. So I brought it up now that we had the vacancy there, because I, you know, years ago when we did the overlay, that was a point of contention, that whole industrial area in there was a point of contention. I, you know, back then, it was, I had proposed doing, you know, that whole industrial area, rezoning it back then, and there was a lot of debate on the board, and a majority of the committee, I should say, and a majority of the committee felt that it would be, you know, they didn't want to approach, you know, the changing of zoning down in that area at that point in time. So, they were afraid that, you know, businesses that were existing in there, even though, you know, they would have continued to be able to operate, and it wouldn't have affected them until, until they went to change their use. But at least at this point in time, you know, where that use is out of there, I think it would be an appropriate time to move forward on, on making it conform to the downtown and the, you know, the vision that we have in the downtown, which, quite honestly, doesn't really have, have any room for, you know, an industrial use or, you know, we had this discussion back when Advanced Auto Parts wanted to go in. You know, we don't want the use as a, a use of a, of a, you know, a, what am I trying to think? Not wholesale, but a warehouse, warehouse use is just not, it's inconsistent with the overlay and the whole vision of the downtown, which is, you know, pedestrian-friendly storefronts and retail and, and uses to that effect, uses that will complement the other businesses down there and, and create an environment where they all can thrive. So that was the reason why when this became vacant, I felt like it might be an opportunity to look to rezon it. And again, the rezoning, you know, people are concerned about, you know, if the town gets into a rezoning issue, will the landowners, you know, will we find ourselves in a lawsuit or anything like that? Well, the reality is, the retail is a much more, is a higher and better use. So it actually commands higher rates than wholesale does, so it's actually enhancing the value of, in my opinion, it's enhancing the value of the property as well, so would most likely not affect us on the other end of a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I, I suspect that this is something that we can dispense with pretty quickly. Is there anyone on the board who is not in favor of this? No, all right, is there anyone on the board who feels that we need greater discussion on this, since it seems like we're all in favor? All right, is there anyone in the listening audience that wants to weigh in? Okay, if that's the case, I suggest we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, this is Michael, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second. Thank you. Roll call?
You're muted, Kristen.
Aaron Larue, sorry, I was on mute. Vice Chairman Impumba, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Mike, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to rezon the property at 207 Cambridge Street, the general business BG district.
Second.
Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impumba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Espoio?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, hopefully all the rest of our items on our agenda will go that smooth from now on. Okay, um, and I, I apologize. I've already forgotten what letter we were on, Kristen.
G. Now we're on G.
Now we're on G. Okay, so item 7G is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 26 Beacon Street. First Patriot Corporation is the applicant. We are not going to be voting on this item tonight because it is the first time we have entertained it. But it's a relatively simple matter. I believe the applicant is here and can give us a brief introduction.
Uh, yes, Madam Chairman, I'm, uh, Charles Mahock with Brickpoint Properties. Um, we're the managing agent for, uh, First Patriot Corporation that owns, uh, Beacon Village Apartments. And, uh, I'm here with Colleen McInnesby, the property manager, and Patrick Vogel, who is the civil engineer for Howard Stein Hudson. We are, um, proposing a new accessory structure, uh, on the front corner of the property, as you will see on the plans Patrick has. And they're up on your screen now. The structure is actually gonna serve three purposes for the property. It's going to take our current open air compactors, which, uh, do recycling and trash, and move them into an enclosed facility. Uh, it's gonna take the truck that services those compactors and no longer have it circle all the way around the site, but allow it to, uh, pull into our existing entry drive, pull a K turn into the existing, uh, adjacent entry drive and back up, pick up the compactors and then pull out of the property forward again. The building also has a small accessory room that will, uh, allow UPS and other, uh, vendors who currently drop packages off at the property. Sometimes at the leasing office, sometimes at each of the individual buildings, to have a central location where they can, they can drop these off. And it's going to have an automated system, uh, proposed to be by a company called Hello Package. Um, the shelves are, um, linked to the internet. The u, uh, delivery people put the information into the system and it actually sends emails to the tenants and lets them know that they have a package in this facility and gives them an access code to gain access to their packages. The last purpose of this building is there's a wraparound porch with a, uh, large covered area at the front facing Beacon Street. And this is the location where, uh, the school kids who live on the property, uh, can stay out of the rain when they're waiting for the school bus or the snow. Uh, the school buses, you may know, used to circle around the property and pick up, uh, the school kids at three or four locations. Um, that service was stopped a couple of years ago and it now stops on Beacon Street. And so the kids gather out at the end of the driveway there and are out in the rain and the elements. So we figured as long as we were building the structure, we can include a bus shelter piece for them on the property where they can stay out of the rain and snow. Uh, that's the general gist of it. Uh, I'm gonna let Patrick take over and talk about, uh, the engineering portion of this. But that's what the whole new structure is for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Charles, thank you very much for that, um, detailed overview. I don't know if there's a way, uh, either request control or maybe, oh, there we go.
Patrick, you should be able to share now.
Okay, let me, uh, all right, so let me know if, uh, you can, you can see the screen here. Hey, can everyone see what I'm, what I'm seeing here?
You got a, you got an email up there, Patrick. You had the, you had the.
Oh, I'm sorry. How about that? Awesome, okay. So basically, um, a, as Charles mentioned, I'm just kinda gonna go through the plans here and, uh, and I'll walk you through sheet by sheet, basically showing, uh, uh, what, what we have here, what was presented. So basically the cover sheet is just your, uh, basic zoning information, parking requirements, general notes to the construction plans and whatnot, um, a butter's information. Um, a lot of the zoning information is based off of the whole site. Um, some of it is based off of the new construction of that, of that building there. And then, uh, some legend information. So going to the locusts and demolition plan, let me, uh, kinda scroll in here, get a better understanding. For, the majority of these plans are broken up into, uh, three detail sections. So Detail A is going to be where the large majority of the construction is. That's going to be where that, that new building that Charles mentioned was. So you're going to have, um, this, this second entrance. So this is the main entrance, um, into Beacon Village here. And this is gonna be on the southwest of the property where, um, you know, where you enter into, into the property and then you have the leasing office here right here. On the left, you have, um, an existing kind of recreation area, like a basketball court with a, a gravel parking, uh, kinda access off the left here. There is a, its own, um, it has its own access on the left-hand side of the existing Beacon Village entrance. So this is just kinda showing what's being removed. You have the existing, uh, small piece of the curb to be removed. There's a catch basin that's gonna be relocated or, uh, removed, drain pipe going to that. Um, there are four parking spaces, four angled parking spaces that are gonna be removed. And those will be relocated to, uh, Detail B, which is, uh, not so much relocated, but the, the space is reallocated. And, uh, in Detail B, you have, um, four Conex containers that are up in the, Detail B is in the top, uh, left-hand corner, so the northwest hand corner of the property. Um, and that'll have a, uh, it has a 30-yard dumpster right around here. It's not really labeled, but four Conex containers. And those will be moved over to Detail C, which is in, it's right up here. It's in the northeast corner of the property. And that's where the existing, uh, compactor is currently located. So this is just kinda showing the, uh, the existing area that's located on the property. So then if you go over to the next sheet, that's gonna be your layout and material sheet. And this is showing that new building that we're putting, uh, in that area. And we have the new area, uh, allocated for that, that truck movement where the, uh, dumpster truck is going to come in, come in from Beacon, uh, Village entrance. It'll c, turn up and make a K movement to turn down towards that compactor area. In the front here is where, uh, you'll have the children that'll wait for the bus, uh, in a covered, uh, an open air covered, uh, location. The existing catch basin was located around, around here. And due to the location of the building, that's being moved over to the, um, to the northwest. Uh, you have, um, handicap access, um, sidewalks that will lead out to Beacon Street so that, uh, kids can get toward, uh, down towards the bus. As of now, the bus will still, uh, pick up and, and drop off in the street as they do, uh, currently. So, uh, we are currently showing a maintenance only water line. So, you know, for hosing off, et cetera, it won't be, there won't be, uh, facilities, um, as far, as far as like a toilet or anything in this building. The utility to the building is shown off of a, uh, existing pole in Beacon Street, uh, to this, right now it's shown to a transformer, which will go to a small utility room in the new building. Um, right, we are having four drop-off only parking spots for, that'll be for like the ki, um, parents dropping off their kids for the bus uh, in the morning. And going over to Detail B, that'll be where you have the, the removal of those Conex containers and the seven, so four of the existing parking spaces, which will be, um, uh, the, those are essentially the relocated ones from over here. And then you have three new ones, which is gonna be the removal of a, uh, a small kind of decorative retaining wall that was in that area. And then this area will just be lowman seeded, kinda be, um, revegetated, which you'll see back in, uh, over in the landscaping plan. In Detail C, you have, uh, kinda where those Conex containers and the 30-yard dumpster is being relocated to. So the 30-yard dumpster is gonna be on the right and the Conex containers are gonna be, uh, neatly stacked to the left-hand side of that. The containers are, are basically just used for, for storage of, um, things for the apartments, whether it's, uh, replacement appliances, chairs, et cetera. Uh, and then the dumpster is like, so if someone moves out, they need to throw away a, um, uh, like a sofa or, uh, something, something like that that the compactors couldn't take. Um, and then this is just kinda showing that it, um, uh, there's a fenced-in area for it, so it's screened. And, um, this will fit within the existing footprint of the previous compactor area. So, uh, and all of these are maintaining existing drive aisles, um, in a one-way traffic flow pattern. So this is the grading plan. Um, there's a four-foot differential in the compactors between where the, um, the, the walkways are for the, the perimeter of that building. And that's just, uh, so that the, uh, the trucks can get in and out and there's, um, uh, the ability to throw things in from the top there. Um, the grades here are shown as slopes down from Beacon Street and it'll pitch towards a, uh, small sediment pour bay, which will go towards the grass channel and outlet towards that relocated catch basin. This will give you, uh, TSS removal, um, for, for this area where there previously, um, really was none. Also, the building will have a drip edge system for that clean runoff. Let's see, there's a, uh, a drain pipe that's being relocated from, excuse me, from that, uh, existing catch basin to, uh, a new drain manhole, which will tie back into that existing system and kinda complete it as it is, uh, today. Over here, we have, again, very minimal grade changes, just kinda pitching back into how it, how it is graded now. And then this is gonna just be revegetated, very minimal graining over here. Landscaping plan, um, just kinda some, some screening, a lot of, good amount of screening in the front to kind of make this aesthetically pleasing and then just kind of some, uh, erosion control mix and, uh, um, kinda planting schedule for, for this small, small, uh, swale here. And a little planting schedule. Uh, lighting plan, there's some nice, um, kinda diagrams here to show how that building, um, is illuminated in the front there. And, uh, the building's aesthetically pleasing as well, so it kinda shows. So, uh, it's a nice little diagram there. And then mostly these are just construction details, kinda show, um, how this is, uh, kind of detailed out. And then, uh, truck turning movement, again, how that, that garbage truck comes in, makes that K movement, comes down and then it'll exit through that, um, uh, kinda exit only area. So this will really only be the, um, for that garbage truck. There'll be signs, signs here that say do not enter. You know, uh, garbage truck, uh, only. And so this way it doesn't kinda have to make a complete loop throughout the site. It can kinda be in and then out of sight. So. Yeah, that's it. That's about it. And, uh, if you guys have any questions for me or, uh, or Charles or Colleen, anyone, I'd be happy to field those.
Thank you, Patrick. It, it sounds like, um, a number of improvements that will help the residents that live there. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, so, uh, as I mentioned to you guys, from what I understand, the dumpsters are like those, you know, kind of, I don't know if it's 20, 30, 40, but they, they, it's not like they're going in and picking up the dumpster and like dumping it back in. They go in, pick up the whole thing, take it away, then bring back a new one. So the couple of things we talked about when we talked about it at a department level is, um, any sound and buffer to the neighborhood, to, to the residential neighborhood to the left. Um, we just wanna take into account, um, those neighbors and any vegetation. But overall, I think the consolidation of the trash into this one building as well as the, the, an area for the kids and a pickup for packages is, is, I think, a huge improvement for the, the, um, the complex. So, um, overall, we're, we're in favor. I think there's just some minor things that we just wanted to make sure we took a look at. And just, it, any additional sound is mitigated.
Okay, thank you. Board members, I see Phil raising his hand. Oh, go for it.
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in there. So I was a little confused on where this, this, the trash building's gonna be. Is it in the northwest part, right near the neighborhood or?
Uh, it'd be in the southwest. It'll be directly adjacent to the existing entrance.
Okay, okay. So let me see. So the existing trash now is in, is in the northeast. And now you're putting it to the southwest where you've got a couple of houses right there next to them on Beacon.
So Brady, if you can pull up a street view, that might be helpful.
I'm, I'm on a street view here, but yeah, you can maybe point that out for everybody there.
Yeah, so there's, um, if you're on street view, you can see there's a, there's an existing basketball court there. It'll go right to where that, that basketball court is.
Yeah, and you've got, so, yeah, maybe Brady can bring it up so everybody can see from the street view. Brady, can you do that first?
Yeah, I think he's just trying to get control back, so.
Yeah, ah, get control.
Yeah.
Ah, there you go. Great, thanks, Brady. Um, uh, instead of a street view, I wanna maybe just a, a drone.
I don't think that's where we are.
No, no.
Wrong place.
Wrong, wrong.
Sorry, I'm where I am right now. I'll bring us to Burlington.
That doesn't look great. But anyway, you guys.
Here we are.
Okay. Right, thank you. Okay, so if you move up, I think if you move it up a little bit, we can see the southwest, uh, no, shoot, down, I'm sorry, down.
Yeah, go to Beacon Street. Go to street view on Beacon Street.
Corner, it looks like where the trees are and that little entrance, where it's gonna be to the left of that, right?
Yeah, so just, just to the left of that screened entrance there.
Okay, so move, move your, Chris, move, you can move the picture over just a little bit so we can see the house right next to it. So there you go. So you got neighbors right there. So my concern is this guy right here. So we, if you look, if you kinda go another sky view there, where the trash is currently, is in the, it's in the northeast corner.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's kinda further away from the neighborhood. So I, I, I think I have a fairly large concern about that. And I think the only thing I'd ask the applicant, uh, you, you said, uh, in back now, there's gonna be three shipping containers?
Uh, there are Conex containers. They'd be used for just, um, like, storage of things like, uh, like an, uh, additional appliance or like a chair or something like that, that would be used for, um, the, you know, the apartment.
And, and is just one shipping container? A, a Conex, maybe folks aren't familiar with Conex containers. Maybe you can show a picture of one, uh, if you just wanna do a Google search there, Brady.
You could probably just scroll up on the screen because they're in their back left-hand corner there on the property now. They're just getting relocated.
So the shipping containers that are right?
No, that's the compactors.
Yeah, so where the shipping containers?
To the left.
Right.
And they're gonna be relocated over to the right corner where the compactors are, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And there's gonna be three of them? You have, you already have three shipping containers now or?
I think there are four. Colleen, you would have to answer that.
About that, there are four existing, uh, co, uh, containers, storage containers that house appliances, toilets, supplies for the apartments.
And you're gonna go down to three then and put it in that corner?
No, I think it's still the four.
Still four shipping containers. Uh, are the, the four that you have existing, are they approved on any previous plan?
Uh, they're existing there now.
That's not the question.
That's not the question.
Have they been approved?
I'd have to look, yeah, I'd have to look into that.
That is on mute. Um, I'm not, there are worse, the, the trash locations, I'm not sure about the container.
Okay. Yeah, just, just in general, just my philosophy in shipping containers, uh, I'm not, not a big fan of them having around town. So anytime I see them coming up, I do, uh, look to see, you know, why they're there. So what's, what's going in them again? You get like pool chairs and off-season and storage, um, like, uh, e, extra, you know, facilities type stuff or something. You have an extra toilet in there type of thing?
Exactly. They have a supplies, property supplies, toilets, appliances, pool furniture, um, supplies.
Let me ask you, let me ask you this for, for folks that run these type of apartments. Let me ask you, let me ask you this for, for folks that run these type of apartments. What, what does everybody else do instead of putting shipping containers on their property? Where do they put their storage?
I can't speak to, um, the other communities. I, I, if some, some communities have basements, um, I think most do have, um, storage containers. Um, you know, it just depends on, on the property and, and what they had when, when they were built.
Maybe, maybe what we do in this, just from the overall standpoint, is instead of continuing with shipping containers, you, you're building a nice area for your package drop-off and for kids doing something like that. Maybe in the back, you can put, you know, a storage building, so you don't need the, the shipping containers anymore. And then it, then it really, you know, brings your property up and it, it doesn't, it's not an obstacle for the town, something like that. That's just my two cents there, Madam Chair, thank you.
Um, I, I like that idea, Bill. Um, I'm not going to weigh in too much right now because I want to hear from the rest of the board members, but I, I like the idea you've present, presented. Um, what other board members want to weigh in on this?
Uh, this is Paul. I agree with Bill's, I agreed with Bill's first point about that, uh, container right by the residence. And I want to know how that's going to be mitigated. That is, you know, because it, because it looks fairly close to the house.
Um, Brady, do you have the, um, the architectural plans to share?
The floor plan, I can pull those up.
And the elevations?
I believe so, let me look.
So Madam Chair, um, something I neglected to mention at the beginning of this is, um, this structure and all of the paving and everything associated with it meets all the zoning setbacks, including the buffer zone from the RO neighborhood adjacent to us. Um, so we left the 50-foot landscape buffer that's required, um, to make sure that we were staying as far away as we could from, uh, our residential neighbors. Um, and then as Kristen mentioned, uh, these, these containers are, are compactors that are enclosed. And when the truck comes in, it does just take the whole enclosed container with it. There's no period of time where the truck has to put a net over it or anything. It just pulls it out.
I think we understand that. I think the question is regarding the storage containers that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to bring.
Actually, let me, let me clarify, I've got two points.
Okay.
One, you're moving the trash, you, you dump this in, and I understand it's just a track, a truck backing up and forth. But, uh, you, you're going to have, people are actually going to put trash there, right?
Uh, the way it works is they walk up behind, uh, an, an, uh, covered porch. And this is why I wanted the elevations. Um, and they actually don't, the dumpsters aren't open. There's a door in the wall of the building. Uh, here we go. Um, so if you look at the bottom left-hand elevation, that porch that runs along the backside of the building, on the bottom left-hand of this sheet, you'll see two small doors. They're about 42 inches off the ground. People open those doors and put their trash bag inside the door and close it. And the reason for the, Patrick was discussing the four-foot elevation earlier, the dumpsters actually sit four feet below that elevated walkway. So between that 48 inches and the 42 inches that the door is above the grade, when they put their trash in, there's a vertical chute that allows the trash to go down into the compactor. So, um, people are putting their trash in the dumpsters, but it's not throwing it into an open dumpster. It's through an enclosed door that they open and close. And every third time that door closes, the compactor activates. But of course, now it's within a structure, so, you know, its sound is mitigated.
What, what's, what's the, what's coming off that? Do you have that information?
I don't have that information. It's the same compactors we've got at the back corner of the building. We can run them for you if you'd like to come see the site.
Yeah, because what you've got is you've got the neighbor right next to it, right? You're, you're putting it, you're putting that right next to the neighborhood now versus putting it in the back of the building.
Uh, in the back of the property, yes. The back of the property does have setbacks for buildings, so we'd have to get a variance.
Say again?
To put a building at the back corner, we'd have to get a variance because of the site distances. Whereas here, we have the 50-foot buffer.
I'm going to take a look at that. So you need the variance from your, from your, uh, from your own building then?
No, only, no, only if we were to put a building at the back of the site, as you mentioned earlier. No, this one doesn't require any variance.
It's got to be 50 feet from where? From the property?
This one has to be 50 feet from an RO district.
And the RO district is the arboretum?
No, I'm talking about this building, sorry.
I'm sorry, so, so to put it in the back, you said you needed a variance?
Oh, because we're up against the property lines back there.
Right, and the RO is the arboretum?
No, that's an RG, I believe it's an RG.
No, the, the arboretum's RO.
So the.
Oh, is it RO?
So that's why you need the variance there?
It was a 40B project, so it was RO.
Okay. So, so if you put a building there, so now you're, and that's so confusing, a couple of things. So you're saying for this, for the storage containers, for the shipping containers?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I was, I was back on, just, let me try it one more time. Two items. One is put in the dumpster right next to the, uh, the neighbor. Right, you're moving the dumpsters from the northeast corner to the southwest corner, right next to the neighborhood. Right, and it's a, it's a compactor flying in that?
It's a compactor, a pair of compactors, one for recycling and one for trash.
And it's in a building and it goes off every three times the door shuts?
That's the way it's currently set, I believe, yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Um, can I, can I, um, jump in here? It seems like, um, there's a few more things here than I realized. And it might make sense for us to have a site visit, so we can actually go out and look at this and see how close it is to the neighbors. And I'd also like to give some, have you consider a different solution for the storage containers? So I think maybe we're not going to be able to finish all that tonight, but I, I do think it would make sense for us to go out there and actually walk the site and see where this is in relation to the neighbors. Um, does that sound like, I think that, that you could do that? And would the board members be agreeable to set up a site visit?
Yeah, that'd be great. Maybe they could, they could put out where the building's going to be, you know, we can see how, where that is for the neighbors.
Right, I think it would be helpful to actually see it. And since we're not going to vote on this tonight, and there are some outstanding questions, I think maybe it might be more productive to set up another meeting, perhaps onsite or, or perhaps not, but I think in-sight would probably be most helpful, um, so that we can get through some of these details. And in the meantime, I, I think I would like to ask the applicant to consider, for the second issue that, that Bill raised, um, another solution other than shipping containers for the storage of those items that you need to store. Um, because shipping containers are certainly unsightly, and moving them to the front of the park, property is certainly not going to make it any better.
Shipping containers are not moving to the front of the property, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're going to pay it back. They're going to move around the corner to go with.
Oh, around the corner, okay, okay, all right.
So instead.
Let's discuss that anyway, though. But I, I think maybe it might be more productive to, to set up another meeting onsite and, and not, not on, in this forum. Does everyone feel amenable to that?
I agree.
I'm always up for a road trip.
Barbara, Barbara, this is like.
Yes, Mike?
Sounds good to me.
Oh, okay, all right, um.
Barbara, this is Ernie. We did, we did have one person who earlier interrupted you, if you remember, was here for, I believe, this project. I don't know if he's still around, we might want to hear.
Okay, is there somebody, a neighbor or, or anyone in the listening audience that wanted to comment on this? Okay, perhaps it was someone else.
Yep.
So, if we are going to do that, um, I think it might be more productive for us to continue this matter and set up a meeting offline. Sound okay? Okay. All right, and to the applicant, do you agree with that?
Sure, absolutely.
Hey, let's do that. So I am looking for a, a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of September 3rd?
Removed.
So moved.
And seconded, seconded by Mike.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba. Member Clark Raymond.
Yep.
Member Kino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Asfaya.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Okay.
Okay, item eight, Chandler Road.
Item eight, um, yeah. Item eight is a public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, zero Chandler Road, GTH Homes LLC is the applicant. Um, this is the second time this matter has become before us.
No, this is the first, this, we had a sub.
Sorry, you're right. So, um, again, this is another matter that we won't be voting on tonight. Um, but I just sort of want to caution everyone that we still have a pretty significant amount of this agenda to get through. So we're going to have to limit our discussion on all of our future items. Try to get some of the questions out there so that we can give that guidance to the applicants and have, um, answers at the next meetings. But I don't think we should, we shouldn't be trying to resolve all of these problems tonight. It's not going to happen, we're not going to vote on them tonight. Let's get the questions out, get the information out there, and then try to move on so that we can have the answers at our next meeting. Makes sense?
Yeah, the chair.
Yes. And what I'd like to also add to the applicant is to really focus on layout, access. I know the neighbors are looking for access to Mill Pond, um, and kind of wait to talk about a lot of the utility stuff until we get a little more feedback from departments.
Okay, sounds good. So, who do we have here representing GTH Homes?
Uh, Stephen Dresser.
Can you hear me?
Am I on? Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Steve.
Uh, can I share my screen?
You absolutely can, Steve, this is Brady.
Okay, uh, for the record, Stephen Dresser, Dresser Williams and Way. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. Um, what, what we have before you is a proposed four-lot subdivision off of Chandler Road. It abuts the Mill Pond Conservation Area. Uh, in this subdivision, three lots, uh, to be constructed on. And one lot has been set, set aside for donation to the town. Uh, again, along Mill Pond Conservation Area. Uh, this would be a good acquisition for the town to get, or contribute to open space. Uh, the existing site uh, is shown here. Um, the drainage pattern, it, it comes from the southeast side and down onto the lot. And the lot itself flows into a vernal pool. That's at the bottom, there is a drain pipe that flows north back to, um, Aris Drive here. Um, there is also a restrictive point up here, where if this vernal pool gets full, it will actually start flowing back to the conservation area. We did go to the Conservation Commission for, uh, uh, order of resource delineation. So the vernal pool and the wetlands line, uh, ha- have been set. This project initially started out, uh, we had met kind of a subcommittee with department heads with an intent to do, uh, three lots, three Form A lots along Chandler Road, with a right way to the back, uh, and a couple of frontage lots. Uh, at, at the subcommittee meeting, uh, the person, the town planner, had suggested that we make an, an effort to see if we could create a subdivision, um, that would be more attractive and, and more fitting with the neighborhood. Um, so that this is how we went to work and we arrived at, at this layout. Uh, one of the applicants, Greg, Greg Hickox is here. Uh, and his business partner named Bob Richard couldn't attend tonight. But it's their intent to, to live in, uh, the two homes have lot two and lot three. So they're doing this for their own personal homes. Uh, as I stated, the drainage comes this way. It will be caught by the, the roadway. I would propose a one, uh, curb along this. The flow from Chandler, at, at the beginning of the road will flow down as a catch basin in this area. And again, all this is caught, comes into an, a subsurface infiltration system, which is fitted with an isolator row at the beginning for removal of suspended solids. Um, there are also drainage trench, stone trenches around the hu- homes and individual infiltration systems on the lots, um, to reduce the amount of flow into the wetlands to meet the criteria. Uh, we are, uh, we have been approved by the Board of Health on this, uh, for the drainage. Uh, it has been brought up, there is a pathway on this that, that has been used by the neighborhood um, to access, uh, Mill Pond Conservation Area, even though it's over, over private land, it, it has been used. And it was our intent to actually relocate along this line. Uh, we did have one Conservation Commission meeting, and John Keely, of the, the Conservation Director, indicated that, that he would rather the town kind of had control of that path and that, that Conservation Commission would, would make the steps to, to put that path on, on lot four. Uh, again, that's, that's the one that is to be donated to the town. We have asked for some waivers, um, on this. Uh, again, um, this, this was something that was directed by the planning board for us to try and, and do a roadway, it's got some frontage lots. Um, these include a, a width of the road. Um, the regulations say 26, would like to go to, to 24, possibly even 22. Uh, the width of the cul-de-sac right-of-way has been reduced, um, not the, of the cul-de-sac pavement, so the turnaround is there, uh, but we've re- reduced the right-of-way. Uh, main reason for this is because of the vernal pool. This house on lot two, uh, is, is somewhat in proximity there. So we're, we're making an effort to, um, push that house as far away from that vernal pool a- as possible while still meeting zoning. Uh, we, we've asked to eliminate that planting that, that can go in, in the circle, uh, primarily because, you know, it, it hurts the turning for fire trucks, garbage trucks, such. We're asking for, um, as I mentioned, curving on one side. Uh, because the flow comes down from this side, so it's just acting to block on there. Uh, it's a very small road and we feel that's appropriate. Um, elimination of sidewalks, again, on a small road, street trees. Again, we've reduced the size of the right-of-way. Um, and with Mr. Hickox and Mr. Richard living here, they're going to have appropriate landscaping out there. You can count on that. Uh, we, again, another waiver would be a water loop. And we've asked to eliminate the, uh, requirement to locate trees, uh, on the subdivision. Actually, which trees are, are there? We are cutting to make the drainage work and the houses work and all there. So it's pretty clear what's going, again, a smaller subdivision with the applicants living there. So that pretty much sums it up. Uh, any questions, I'm here, and again, Mr. Hickox from GTH Homes here as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um, Kristen, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, so this did start as, uh, an A and R, uh, which is the Form A lot that, um, Mr. Dresser was talking about. They do have enough frontage, um, to do three lots on this site. Uh, as you can imagine with the vernal pool, the lots laid out, kind of in a funky lot shape kind of way. It also was tough to kind of carve off the conservation, um, area, so as neatly as this. So I think, I think this layout is much improved from what we originally looked at. Um, as I've mentioned a lot of times, um, with this board, is when we look at waivers, um, waivers should be making the subdivision kind of better, not possible. Um, so I think when we're looking at this and looking at the sensitivity to the wetland areas and the vernal pool, as well as looking at three lots and what's appropriate for access. I mean, they're, they're looking to reduce it from 26 to 24, which is more than reasonable. Um, and then some of the other, other waivers, which we can talk about further. I know some of the neighbors were looking at, um, looking, oh, and one thing actually before I go back up. So they actually had this shifted over a little bit closer to the vernal pool, the roadway, so they have a. So they actually had this shifted over a little bit closer to the vernal pool, the roadway, so they have a little bit more of a buffer between the, uh, neighbors at thirty Chandler. But one of the other concerns from engineering and police was a concern that if, if the road wasn't lined up with the road across the street. Um, and that usually when, we encourage roads either to be totally off or lined up, because if they're just a little bit, it ends up being a turning movement issue. So, um, they did line that up, but it did push the road a little closer to those neighbors. So I think they're the ones that also reached out to make sure that there was some plantings, um, that were placed along that area. Um, I know part of the pathway, public pathway to the Mill Pond was potentially looked at to be in that location. If we can move it to more of the, um, the conservation area, I think that would be, that would be good as well, um, to get those neighbors a little bit more of a buffer. But, um, other than that, I, I think it's, you know, I, I've said there's a couple of you. In two thousand three and two thousand four, when I first started, we identified, I think, twenty-five areas in Burlington that we knew or looked at that were potential for build-out and development when we were looking at build-out projections at that time. Uh, and this, this property, among a handful others, um, was one of them. So it, so many of them have already been developed since I've been here, and I, I think this is one of the last ones that we've seen. So I, it's, I don't know, it, it's a subdivision that we've expected for a while. It's been held in property, a family trust until recently. So, you know, I think we're looking at a good proposal with, you know, we, we're still working with the departments on some of the drainage and some of the other just conservation. Um, looking at the plan and, uh, otherwise, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. I think the layout's good, and I'm pleased to see this type of, um, the move toward this layout from the, the A and R plan. And I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to do that.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. All right, board members, who wants to weigh in on this first? Oh, everybody's feeling pretty good about this, huh? Okay, um, I have questions, I wanna, um, I know that there were some questions, I wanted to make sure that the path to Mill Pond is definitely staying.
Yeah, oh, it's, no, it's, it's not staying, it's being relocated onto lot four for the Conservation Commission.
Right, but there will be access that way from Chandler.
There will be access.
Okay, um, and Kristen, you had mentioned, and I recall also receiving that letter, um, from a neighbor who may or may not be here tonight, about some screening. Is that neighbor here?
I believe Margaret is, yes.
Yes, we're here. This is.
Oh, okay.
Margaret Montour, hi.
So perhaps before we turn it over to the board, you, you might want to explain your concerns?
Um, uh, yes, thank you very much, Madam Chairman and Chairwoman, and, um, and to the board. Uh, we, we have, we have a few, um, both questions and concerns. Um, because of the closeness of the road to our, to our property, there, there are a few trees along the way, a few, uh, pretty good-sized hardwood trees, um, that are on, on our side of, of the property line. But I think that as the, as the road, as the property is being developed, even though they may not touch the trees themselves, they're, they're probably gonna damage the roots, which means in all likelihood, we're gonna lose these shade trees that have been along our property line for a long time. Um, and, and it was also on our request that the, that the pathway got moved from right next to our property, um, to the other, to the other side of the development, because, um, we were, we, we had a lot of concerns that if it had been there, that people would be walking on our property, we would have liability. And so I wanna thank the Conservation Commission for, for, for jumping onto that. Um, but, but, but we're really worried about, um, sort of like privacy issues, really, and, and, and so possibly, you know, definitely having some plantings in there and, and maybe even some sort of a privacy fencing between, between us and, and the, um, proposed development. And, and I, and I think just, just for our understanding, we don't understand why there isn't going to be, I mean, and may, and maybe there's really good reason for the, for the flow of the water, but why there isn't gonna be any curving on our side or any kind of a sidewalk a- along this public road, uh, going in. Uh, I think those are sort of the, the biggest issues for us right now, and I think for, for everybody concerned, and, and again, I'm not sure where this falls in the overall planning, but, but if that new pathway put in before all this construction happens, because when that construction starts happening, people are gonna be looking for a way to get back in, and, and the, the most obvious way is gonna be right up, right up the edge of the property line. I think those are the biggest things that, that we have in mind. Um, you know, we've sent out two letters, um, so hopefully some of this can, can be answered and discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, Steve, can you address some of these concerns? Can we discuss some of those?
I'll start in, uh, Mr. Hickox, I, I don't wanna, uh,
Thank you.
I don't want to, um, represent anything, it's not my will to do. Um, for start, as far as the, the pathway, um, we, we did, just so you know, I, I have, I have met the, uh, mentors and, and Greg and I went out there, and we ended up staking the property line today so they could see exactly where everything was. Uh, the pavement's gonna be ten feet off of their property line, even though the right-of-way is kind of right up against them. So if there are trees on their, on their property, I don't think will be affecting the root system that would, you know, and it could have knocked the, if had those trees fail or anything like that. Um, we do know there are some leaners from walking out there, and regardless of where the trees are, um, if, if they would like them to come down, I'm sure Mr. Hickox would, would take them down, he wouldn't, you know, instead of leaving one in question, I guess. As far as the path, um, I think it's gonna take a little bit for the Conservation Commission to, to put that path in. Um, and we're, we're certainly not looking to wait until that happens. Uh, I'm not sure what their funding direction is or all of that. However, there is access further down Chandler Road to the back, so, so what we had discussed when we were out there, that would put up some kind of sign that, that directs them to where that access is, and also informing them that in the future, the intention, you know, that, that we're going to put the path down the road a little bit. Uh, but certainly, we can't have people walking on, on a construction site. So we'll be preventing them from walking across there to get to the back. Uh, anyway, and Greg, you wanna talk about screening and fencing, if you're?
Yeah, sure, um, Steve is exactly right. I met with Bruce and, Bruce and Margaret today about, when, when we bring the tree company out, he'll take a look, and they're, they're experts. So any trees we think, first of all, if they're leaning, I'd be happy to take them down for them while I have my um, but they're experts in telling which trees could be a problem. In other words, big, deep-rooted trees. So we're just gonna have to work with them. I, and we, I plan on, just to, so Bruce and Margaret know on thirty Chandler, I'm doing a tree-lined street. And I'm gonna live here, I wanna do a pretty tree-lined street going to the left of them. Um, so when you come into the property, I wanna do a nice rock wall entrance, a beautiful rock wall entrance with a Mill Pond sign, Mill Pond Lane sign, and a evergreen trees coming down the left side to really where the circle goes. I'm, I'm planning on doing that anyways. So that'll give them, I'm, I'm talking mature, at least nine foot or nine to ten foot evergreens, I can, whatever we can get at the time. So they're gonna have privacy from that, too. And again, you know, we wanna be good neighbors, so we're trying to work with them. And, and the path issue is, um, I give John a lot of credit. John, John, John Keely Conservation loves this property, and, and that's really what enticed me to donate it to the town. Because he, he just talked about the, the beauty of it and the back, and, and when I got to get my partner, we both agreed, let's just give it to him, you know, if, if we got this approved. But, um, he had a better idea, he wants to control the path, make sure the town takes care of it. And he, he's gonna figure that out. So I, I mean, uh, so we did create a path next to it, and I understand Bruce and Margaret's concern with the path was, but we're just trying to make things easy for the neighbors. But I think at the end of the day, this is the best for everybody, uh, 'cause the town can take responsibility for it, which will be, would be in better hands, so. I'm willing to work with them, and when we have the tree experts out there, I can take down some trees for them, any ones that might be a problem for them in the future. I just wanna assure them, it's gonna be beautiful, I think it's gonna enhance. They might wanna, I have a, a GoFund, 'cause their property value is probably gonna go up at least a hundred thousand, if they wanna give some of that money back to me after we do the street. I'm open to that, if they want to, I don't know if they're still there, but, but, um, I, I feel very confident this is gonna be a beautiful project, and I appreciate the Planning Board and Conservation for their input, trying to make this the right thing, you know?
We're still here, by the way.
Oh, okay, great.
You know, yeah, I, yeah, ju- just let me know your bank account number, but, um,
I'll send that to you right now, I'm online, it's no problem, hold on.
But, listen, I really do wanna say, we really appreciate how you've been working with us since we finally started to talk to each other. You know, we, and, and, and the, the whole idea about having the, the, the trees coming up the side, that's really good. You know, we're really hoping we can, some of these large trees just for shade against the side of the house, so, you know, we, we really wanna work with the, with the, the ar- the arborists when they come out. I think that, that will be really important. And I guess the only one thing that I'm still hearing, and really, this is, gentlemen, this is a matter of curiosity, 'cause it's so hard to understand, about the, about the, the berms and the, and the curving and, and the water flow, and, and why you've sort of asked for what you've asked for with
That's about my pay grade, I let Steve.
Um, okay.
You broke up a little bit, I think, asking about the curb?
Yeah, asking about the, the, the curving and why there's only curving on the western side.
The kind of channel flow to, to particular spots, and, and there's just no, a- all the drainage, the catch basins on the other side of the road. So it's just better off to let that, that flow overland right onto the, onto the pavement, there's no real per- purpose for the per- on that, on that, uh, east of these.
So, so if I could just ask for clarification, if it flows that way, then that, it's gonna flow onto the road and down into the street? Is that the idea?
Yeah, yes, I think we lost Steve, Steve, you're back.
Am I back?
Yeah.
I think so.
How much you got heard? I, I was just saying that, that, that there's no real purpose for that curb on that side, 'cause the curbs are meant to kind of direct flow to, to catch basins, and the catch basins on the other side of the road, so it's better off just to let that flow overland, not raising the grade, creating a berm or anything like that. Oh, that, that's reason not to have a curb.
Okay, um, thank you all, um, I am glad that
As do I.
Okay, uh, can you hold on for some, one second? Can we hold on for just one second? Sure. So, um, I wanna make sure my board is okay with us, um, taking public commentary before they had a chance to weigh in, because that, I, I kind of did things a little backwards there. I do think that, at this point, it's important for us to hear from the neighbors, but I also am cognizant of the time, and need to let the board weigh in as well. So how many neighbors do we still have that want to weigh in?
I do.
As do I, Bruce Moore, Barbara.
Okay, so two more, um, and you have specific questions?
I do.
Okay.
It's about the proposed
Let's, let's hear from these two neighbors quickly, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the board, and then we're probably going to be continuing this to the next meeting anyway, we're not gonna be voting tonight. So, I'm sorry, can you please identify yourself and your address?
Yes, it's Carol O'Connor, thirty-five Chandler Road.
Thank you.
Um, I, my question is about the fourth lot, which is being, uh, donated, and it, it sounds like the Conservation Committee is making plans for this, and I'm a little concerned about the public access, and whether or not they are planning on providing parking. Um, I believe the town also owns a two-point-four acre lot that abuts what will be the proposed lot four.
Hmm.
So there's actually more land that the town will have besides this fourth acre. So I'm just wondering what their plans are, and maybe they should, should be at the meeting. Because I envision cars parked up and down Chandler Road, Ellery Road, Harris Street, with people taking advantage of this new pathway that's going to be built, and that will definitely be a problem for this road. So that's my question.
Okay, um, Kristen, do we have any idea if the town has any other plans? I mean, there was already a pathway to Mill Pond here, it's just being moved, correct?
Correct, yeah, I, I, you know, from conversations with, with, uh, Mr. Hickox has had with people in the neighborhood, it's our understanding that it, you know, this is generally a neighborhood path.
Right, yes.
People know park to use it now, and wouldn't expect people to park to use it in the future, just be relocated.
Kristen, are we
And also, you know, the, the, the Conservation Commission i- has a meeting on September twelfth, is that right, Greg?
I think it's September tenth.
September tenth.
John is calling it a walk-in, a, a neighborhood walk-in trail, I think is how he phrased it. So he does, it's supposed to give access
My suggestion is if you have questions for them, then they're turning to that meeting, 'cause we can't speak for them, and neither can the Planning Board at this point.
Um, if that, if that is gonna be a sidewalk, Kristen, can you make sure that the Planning Board is clued into that? So any members that might wanna take a, a walk down there and, and see it, are aware of when it is?
It's not a sidewalk, it's just a public hearing at night, you know, WebEx meeting.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, I thought someone said it was gonna be on the site. Okay, um, so Kristen, we're not aware of any plans by the town to develop this any further or include parking, are we?
Yeah, no, I was just speaking and I was unmute. Um, so, no, I, I mean, as far as I know, it's, there's a path there now, we wanna continue to maintain neighborhood access into Mill Pond. Um, you know, it's in the hands of Conservation in terms of what they decide to do with that piece of land. So I, I would agree that, um, the best place to voice these comments is, is with the Conservation Commission. But I, I would like to understand a little bit further from the neighbors that are speaking. Is it something that you're worried is gonna attract more people, and you, if it's too much of a, I don't know, too much of a path? Or do you want them to provide some parking so people are not parking along Chandler?
Well, the path is on private property right now, so it's, it's not a town-maintained path by any means. It's, it's been there for like thirty, probably forty years. So you can say that the path is being moved, but it's actually a private pathway right now. And yes, people from the neighborhood or people that come and park there, you know, either go up and walk their dogs, or they walk up to the Mill Pond. But if it's going to be advertised as, you know, something that's benefiting the town of Burlington, and there's this new access point to the Mill Pond, since there's no parking on the other side of town, really, to get to the Mill Pond, I, I think it would only make sense if people wanna take advantage of it. They're gonna drive over here, and yeah, they're gonna be parked all over the neighborhood. And yes, that is a concern for me, there's, there's children in the neighborhood, there's people that walk and ride bikes, and the people who speed up and down Chandler Road as it is, so I, yes, that is my concern for parking.
So to Kristen's question, would you prefer that parking is available off the street? Or are you concerned that you don't want to have more access?
I wanna see it stay a neighborhood area. So, and, and so my concern is how the town is going to present this, because if it's, you know, come to Burlington, we have this great area, you know, you can walk up there, go fishing, I mean, you, you, you can't limit it to people that live in Burlington. So, yeah, what the town is gonna do with it is a major concern for me.
Okay.
They say that, that, you know, they're gonna maintain it, which is, it, that's great, but maintain it for what going forward?
Right, well
I just don't think we have enough information about what the Conservation Committee has planned for this, and if it involves that other two-point-four acre lot.
Right, well, if, if the town were to contemplate at some point in the future, creating, for example, a, a parking area, and, you know, more access with trails and paths and marked things, and something similar to what we have over at Mary Cummings, that would have to come back before this board, and be decided upon. They couldn't just start building in there without there being any public hearings on this.
Okay, I mean, I have no problem with the three houses. You, you know, the lot has been used as a dumping ground for leaves and brush for years anyways. So the three houses is fine, but I'm just not really sure that that fourth lot, you know, benefits the town the way it's being presented. And maybe there's just not enough information being presented.
Uh, for, for our purposes, um, you know, we're just donating it. What, what happens from that, you know, that's up to the town. And ju- just so you, you know, Ms. O'Connor, that the two-point-four acres is actually on the other side of, of the lot. It does not abut lot four. It abuts lot three. It's over on the, um, on the easterly side here that the town owns.
So the two couldn't be connected, the two-point-four acre and lot four?
Just through the conservation area, not through the subdivision, but they don't abut.
So they do kind of connect?
You don't.
Hi, this is Bruce.
It sounds like, if I can jump in, it does sound like, um, a, a lot of these are questions that should be brought to the conservation commission. But you can rest assured that there's not going to be any additional building on that site by the town with all the public hearings that you would be aware of and be able to participate in. So, um, who was the other person that wanted to speak? Is it Bruce?
Yes, Bruce Maury, Barbara.
Hi, Bruce.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, uh, for letting me speak. I do want to commend, uh, Mr. Hickox, the opponent, uh, for his transparency and, and willingness to work with, you know, he is a town meeting member. And as, and as, I'm not an abutter to the property. I do two houses across the street on Ellery Lane. I got involved in this originally as both a town meeting member and obviously a neighbor and a user of that property and access to that, you know, that, that path. Um, over the several years I've lived here. And I was very concerned that it was going, that we were not going to have access to that, to that beautiful property any longer. Um, I, the most recent plans that Greg Hickox had shared with me showed, showed a path, uh, across, I, 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 I'm assuming next, next to the Montours. Uh, uh, I believe they're the, the ones at thirty-two Chandler. Um, I'm, I am concerned, uh, uh, along with Ms. O'Connor, uh, Ms. O'Connor's comments regarding the, the conservation, obviously recommending or, or suggesting that they control the path, that's fine. Um, but I am concerned a little bit about the, the wetness of that Vernal Pool area. And to, to Ms. O'Connor's question, I can't imagine there ever being a parking lot or parking spaces in there because it's wet. Um, it would, it would, I think it would be cost prohibitive to, to e- even consider doing any kind of parking structure there. So that's, that's another point for another time. Uh, having said that, I do.
Being contemplated, just so you know.
Correct, I, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean to infer that, sorry.
Okay.
I, I also would not want to have parking there. I wanted to, you know, as Ms. O'Connor indicated, I want it to be remain a neighborhood, uh, path, a neighborhood area where, where the neighborhood accesses it. People do come and park on Ellery Lane, but they're, 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 it's, it's very rare. Uh, and when they do, they, they park, they park to take their bikes or, or dogs or whatever. Uh, and there's not a lot of them, so I'm not that concerned about, um, more people coming there. So, um, my, my main concern with getting involved in this originally was maintaining access to, uh, the Mill Pond Reservation and, and the reservoir area. Because I, along with many residents and, and certainly in, um, that I'm, that I've been talking to, use that area, uh, a lot. And we're very concerned with it. Um, I, I, I do respect and, and appreciate, uh, Mr. Hickox and his, his team, uh, donating that, uh, piece of property back to the town. And so we have, so we'll have access to that. Uh, I am concerned at having access to it during the construction. That was one thing I hadn't thought of until tonight. Uh, it was brought up earlier, so good point by someone. I, I, I forgot who it was. Um, the second thing is, um, the access to, um, access to that property through that wet area. Um, I'm concerned that, you know, it may be a point where there, there are different part, points during the year when we have, you know, a lot of rain. We haven't had any lot of rain recently, but there are times when we do, I would imagine that being impassable. So I, I want to make sure, and then these may be, may be questions for conservation. So I have that date marked down and I'll follow up with John. And again, kudos to John. Uh, I, I reached out to him and, and, and the town administration and to, to get information. And they put me in touch with Mr. Hickox and he's been great with his time and sharing of information. So, um, I want to commend him and, and his team on, on, on this project. And I wish him luck and I do want to, um, um, suggest that, you know, and, and hope that we have a, a, a lamentable solution to, uh, this issue um, as, as a result of this project. Uh, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. It does seem like we probably need to, well, all we probably should go to this conservation meeting where a lot of these questions are probably better answered.
Uh, Barbara, can I just add a second? I know you want to move on. Thank you, Bruce, for the comments, but only conversations with John T. He wants to make this a neighborhood path. He's clear, I, I think Chandler Road is a very narrow road to start with. And the path that we were creating, the new path that I think Bruce you saw pictures, it was like two feet, just enable people in the neighborhood. John, I don't know where it is, but there's supposed to be another path. I think at the end of Chandler, they can park or, I don't know where the location. So I, I, my understanding, and I think the conservation meeting, the tent, is going to be a walk-in path and, and not ours and stuff. But I guess we can take that up with conservation, but.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hickox. So, um, I want to see if any of my fellow board members have questions that are, that they really want to get out tonight. With the understanding that we are not voting tonight, we're going to be discussing this again on the third. Is there anyone that wanted to ask any questions tonight so that those questions can be answered on the third? I'm sorry, who was that?
Bill Gaffney, member Gaffney. Yeah, a question, uh, here, there's other access of Chandler. How far is that of Chandler for that other access?
I'm sorry, who are you asking?
Uh, somebody mentioned that there's another access link into the, uh.
Greg, you were, you were the one who brought that up.
I apologize, I don't know if it's, but John, let me know, we go down the end of Chandler, another road, I'm not sure where it is, to be honest.
It's, uh, Drake, it's Chandler and Drake. And, and honestly, at, uh, different points of Chandler, you can access the rest.
Oh, okay. He just mentioned there was a better spot where people parked to go there and, and he was refunding. I don't think it was the spot he was thinking.
Thank you. And the other thing, it was talked about, uh, a, a rock wall and a nice Mill Pond sign. The intention there that there's going to be a rock wall and has like Mill Pond Estates kind of on the rock wall, or what was, what's the intention?
That's correct, like Mill Pond Estates, that's the, you know, Mill Pond Lane, Mill Pond Estates, but, uh, to make it very, very nice and professional.
So instead of a sign that, that knows the signpost, you're going to have a rock wall and have like, as you get into like a country club type of thing, you're going to have like a Mill Pond. Is that allowed by the town?
Well, it's just a rock wall entrance, I think you've seen them on.
No, but hey, I, is you, I having a sign on the rock wall?
Oh, no, it'll be on the wall, like, you know, you, a rock, you know, a rock wall, not a big wall, because you just have a small entrance there. You know, just say Mill Pond Estates in the middle of the wall is my intention. Not a big sign on the street or anything like that, you know?
Is that allowed?
Good question, Bill. We'll have to look into that. I know that there are some other ones around town, but I, I've never really looked into whether or not that's allowed and as a sign. So we'll have to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one I had was, uh, I, I think Mr. Maury mentioned it. My concern as well, because I think neighbors, uh, when, when I've walked up that trail, you know, the concern is, is that you won't be able to have access. But if you put it over to the right and you use that lot four, and I think Mr. Maury mentioned it, in wet season, you may not, you may not be able to get access up there. It depends on what it is there. So as, as I look at that, if you think about other accesses to other parts of the town, like, um, like Regan Park, that's close to the road. There's, there's a, it's a defined access in there. And so if you could take two feet off of the, of left-hand side of upland, particularly in like one, two, three, while you're talking maybe, uh, you know, two hundred feet total. Maybe three hundred feet, two feet wide, then you really get, you get a, an upland path there and then you have a fence there. Uh, maybe just squeeze off a bit more, you still have the twenty thousand square feet, but then you have the upland trail there versus, I think Mr. Maury is correct that you might have some issues of the access, uh, coming into the Vernal Pool and it's going to be wet and you can't even get to the access where, uh, some kind of getting access there. So that's what I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think that's something the conservation meeting should address because obviously you're going to know what the conditions are.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I'd like to see that before I vote on it because that was so.
We're not voting tonight.
And then the other thing is that, is, is what, as I walk up that, uh, from Mill Street, uh, onto Chandler, that just, everyone knows Chandler's a very busy street there. It's an opportunity to get a sidewalk there, because if you're coming up, the people from Mill Street that come up Chandler, you know, it's, it's, you have to jump off the side if traffic's coming down as you try to get access to, uh, to the Mill Pond there.
A sidewalk built, you mean, along the entire length of Chandler?
We've always talked about sidewalks where it's heavily traveled. And, uh, you know, it's a, it could be a start for that particular road. So is there going to be a contribution to the sidewalk there and then put it, you know, a back portion of it where the town boards, uh, can go at some point from that access point down to the end of, uh, Mill Street.
Okay, so that's.
The other reason I say that I've walked it and, you know, you, you, you're jumping off the, the road when you get two lanes of cars. So you have to, if there's a sidewalk there and it's, it's fairly busy road and it's, it's well-traveled with people still walking. Because people are walking ducks in there all the time. It's my comment.
Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, um, I actually went to the property and, and met with, um, Montories today. And I'm a little concerned about kind of the, the privacy and the trees. Um, and to mirror what Bill had said, you know, if that path goes on to lot four, again, that, that is, to wetlands, you won't be able to get through there. I suspect that if we don't put, or if the, the developer doesn't put a fence or some type of separation, people are going to walk right down Mill Pond Lane, cut through the back of lot three, and then go back through, um, to Mill Pond. So, um, I, I, Greg, the Montories had mentioned a fence. Is that something that you might be agreeable to?
I, I think, to be honest, um, I want to do a tree line fence. I think the beauty of the conservation land is the trees and not a fence.
Well, I agree.
I actually asked Steve on engineering on if we could put no parking signs, I don't know if we saw that on the left of that street on our new, uh, new road. So cars will not be allowed to park there. They would be ticketed. But I, I think a fence would take away the beauty of the whole land. So that's a tree line fence.
Again, maybe what I recommend is that maybe they can go down from Skilton and see where you get access to Regan Park down there. It's got a fence, but there's a lot of trees on there too, so you really can't tell it's there. But there's a combination trees and fence, so you really know where to go and direction.
I think the common, I'm sorry, um, I think the combination of the tree and fence on the left side of Mill Pond Lane would be very beneficial. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. Any other board members?
Um, I just wanted to add, you know, I, I mean, it's, the site, uh, clearly, as Kristen said, was going to be developed by somebody. I just consider us fortunate enough to have gotten the, the guy that's going to be willing, is, appears to be as willing as he is uh, to, to incorporate anything that the conservation is asking him to do and anything the neighbors are asking him to do. Um, and, and, and I think from this point on, I feel comfortable that he's going to be accommodating pretty much everything that's, that's been requested. So, um, I just, I want to thank him for that, quite honestly, because I know that there were a lot of people looking at that site. And I think, you know, uh, it could have been a nightmare. And, and I think this is, this is a pretty good project that I think the town's going to benefit tremendously from that. Half of the, literally half of the parcel, half of that total parcel which is gifted over to the town.
I agree with you. Um, we really need to move on to the next thing. I think we've got a lot of good information out of this and we need to continue this to the next meeting, um, and move on. Sorry, folks. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
We just need a roll call.
Uh, Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Chairman Apamba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Estero?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I also make a motion for us to go past eleven o'clock.
Flying by me, I just brushed my teeth.
Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Apamba? Member Clark Raymond? Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Estero? Member Rappaport?
No.
Okay.
Okay, now, um. Item K, the next item on the agenda is item K, public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan. One oh one Francis Wyman Road and three to six Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates LLC is the applicant. Before we hear from the applicant, I just want to, um, caution everyone. All night long, I've been saying this, we are looking at a very narrow part of this project, not the entire project. Let's please try to stay focused on that, because we, we really can't afford to keep going off into bigger items.
And we're not voting.
We're not going to be voting on this tonight. This is referring to Francis Wyman Road, where there could be a cul-de-sac and we don't want a cul-de-sac there. So that's what, that's what this is, we've discussed this, um, um, at great length in the past. And then it's also a shift to the driveway at Fort Dartmouth. Those are the only issues in front of us here tonight. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So who is here from General Walker Estates?
Yeah, Steve, let me just introduce it because Ed did, but yeah, this is Gareth Orsman, the counsel for, um, General Walker Estates and, um.
And if we can just hone in just on those two things, that would be great.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Thank you.
So very, very quickly, address one of the few comments we have. Um, this is.
Somebody's trying to get your attention, Barbara.
Madam Chair, my name is Dana Sacker. I'm the site contractor and partner in General Walker Estates. I'm actually on the line as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can I, can I proceed now?
Please go ahead, yes.
Yeah, so, so obviously in two thousand and sixteen, there was approved six lot subdivision. Two of the lots on that subdivision, lots one and two, did not have sufficient frontage on Francis Wyman Road. And so the subdivision included a very small cul-de-sac known as Terra Firma Lane. The application before it was to modify that, um, subdivision to take out the cul-de-sac and have the frontage directly on Francis Wyman Road. Because following the approval of the subdivision, in March two thousand and seventeen, the Board of Appeals granted a variance for these two lots so that they could have less than the required one hundred foot, uh, frontage. Um, lot one would have seventy-six point five four feet and lot two seventy-three point one six feet. Um, that variance was recorded. That was one of the few comments we saw. It's recorded in the registry in book six nine one one seven, page seventy-two. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Dresser to explain whatever else needs to be explained.
Um, thank you, Gareth. I'll just get into, I think Gareth explained everything relative to, to, um, why we're here. Uh, I'll just explain what, what this means. Uh, the, the prior subdivision had a cul-de-sac that kind of on paper that, that was, oh, I'm sorry, am I, are you still sharing my screen?
Yes, actually, I think, I mean, this was actually discussed in, in, by the board previously. And we even, um, as I recall, gave guidance and direction to the Board of Appeals that we were in favor of eliminating the cul-de-sac because it reduced the impervious surface and it was just a better plan.
That, that's correct. It was actually in the condition. So they went forward. So, so what this means is now we can move these houses up closer to the road, have shorter driveways. And we were able to revise the drainage because of the reduction in pervious area. Just to have individual, um, infiltration systems, gutter drains and such on the lots. These, this, this is a comparison. Here's the old limit of work. There was a drainage system back here, an outlet pipe that came through here. So this is a, a ten thousand square foot reduction on the limit of work, um, also known as the amount of trees that are being cut. So this is significant, allowing us and advising us to go to the Board of Appeals, it ultimately meant, you know, there's a preservation or. meant, you know, the preservation of this, this area, this 10,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Well, that there are real results involved in that. This plan is kind of a drainage divide. So this, for the record, none of this goes down to the Dartmouth Road, all kinds of drains northeast onto Gloria Circle. There's basically a 40% reduction in runoff from pre-development to post-development. So I would say the, we accomplished the goal of reduction of impervious area, reduction of tree clearing, and reduction of stormwater sizing while still maintaining a significant reduction in stormwater runoff off-site.
Okay, thank you, Steve. There's also a slight change to the driveway at Fort Dartmouth. Is that correct? As part of this? Is that part of this?
What is this one? It's, is, there's a slight redesign in that just to make it, you know, and, and this stormwater area is actually, we actually increased the size of it just to reduce the amount of coming, coming downhill.
The size of, of the driveway?
The infiltration system.
Oh.
I think, Steve, you're talking about.
It's really just reconfigured a little bit. So we're not real, there's not a significant change in that. At one time, he was going to increase the size of this house significantly. That might have still found its way into the, into the application, but, but the house size is the same. Little bit different configuration of the driveway and a larger infiltration system on that lot.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, do you have anything to add?
So I think, I mean, we expected the change up on Francis Wyman as we encouraged the Board of Appeals to, to approve the variance or wouldn't have that weird bump out. No, I mean, I, the original subdivision conditions still will be, remain in effect. The, the minor engineering change that we've recently approved will also be wrapped into this, in this plan, including the telephone pole movement as well as some of the grading at the, or the cul-de-sac where the previous cul-de-sac had been. But all of that will be wrapped into a decision that you'll see at your next meeting to potentially, if we're ready to act on, but not tonight.
Not tonight. We're not going to vote on this tonight. Do board members have any pressing issues that they absolutely have to get out tonight?
Do you want to motion to continue?
I do, thank you.
Motion to continue this matter at the Planning Board Meeting of September 3, 2020.
Are there any people that are listening that have, that want to just, to comment specifically?
Barbara, you're up.
Mike.
Wants to discuss that.
Madam Chair, this is Anthony Materazzo. I, I have a question. I, so, so what you mentioned as the conversation being specifically about, I, I just want to bring up something that hasn't been mentioned and if it's not appropriate for me to talk about it here, I can talk about it another time, but it's something that I consider to definitely be a major change to the plan. So in addition to what's been talked about here, if you, if you look at the amendment, you can see that the Fort Dartmouth Road on this amended plan is showing as house to remain. The original plan that we all spent many, many, many hours of our time getting approved that, that I've made decisions for my family and I'm based on, is now attempted to be changed. So can, is that something that we should, we can bring up now or is that something we would talk about at a later date? Because to me, that's.
I think this is something that we are consulting with Town Council about and I don't know if you were aware that Town Council was away on vacation, so we haven't been able to get an answer on that. She's back next week, so I think it probably would be more productive for us to talk about it after she returns and gives us her input.
Okay, that's fine. I can, I can hold off then until then. Thank you.
So, so let me just clarify. So, so Tony, you've sent us a list of questions and those we have formulated to Council, which I sent you an email to hopefully catch up with you next week. If there's anything else that isn't in the list that you've sent, please let us know so we can try to wrap everything together next week.
I, I can do that. My main question is really just around the enforcement of the plan, right? We just, we, we've spent a year talking about a situation where the plan wasn't enforced and members of the planning board were genuinely considering ripping up, ripping an entire backyard of an occupied lot, citing the fact that the plan be enforced. So all I'm asking is that the plan be enforced, just like it was for that.
I understand, Anthony, it's a little bit, it, this is different. It's not saying that it can't be enforced. It's a little bit different when we're talking about enforcing drainage plans and this is different because we're talking about whether or not we can require them to tear down a house and build a new one and we don't know if we have the authority to do that. We need to talk to Town Council about it.
Okay.
We do have the authority to tell them that they have to build the drainage system they said they were going to build, but I don't know if we have the authority to do what you're asking and, and that's what we have to wait to find out.
So Kristen, a question for you, if you don't mind. So I, I understand that, you know, the house that's on an approved plan, it's not necessarily going to be built exactly the way it might be on the original plan, right? They might, they might decide to move a driveway or make it a little bigger or make it a little smaller within, within reasons there are things allowed, right? But actually just not building the house and leaving a house that's facing the wrong direction, the whole street's been redesigned. It's not even facing the right direction.
Town Council, I'm very sorry, we don't have an answer for you tonight. We have to talk to Town Council and then we'll have to talk to you next week. We understand, we, we, because we completely understand what your issue is. We understand what the problem is, but we don't have an answer for you tonight. I'm sorry.
Okay.
She was away on vacation, so we couldn't get that done.
All right, I understand.
I'm sorry, I know you're disappointed and we will talk next week.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony?
Yes.
Who's that?
This is Dana Sacker. How are you?
Oh, wait a while.
Can we, you want a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of September 3? Okay.
Is that seconded?
Excuse me. I made the motion originally, so I'll second it.
Thank you.
There are other abutters that have a question?
Oh, there are?
All right, pardon me.
Who are the other abutters?
My name is Joe Mullin. My wife Kathleen and I live at 106 Francis Wyman Road across the street from 101 Francis Wyman Road. We, we did have a couple of questions.
Of course, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here.
You've been busy.
It's hard when there isn't a room where we can see people.
I'm not sure if I can answer these questions, but I'll, I'll try and move along as quickly as possible. I know you guys are busy. The frontage variance that was granted back in March 2017, that, that was based on a Board of Appeals application for a hearing dated 12/22/2016 and it had an attached Exhibit A. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'd have to look, but it was the variance request for less than 100 feet of frontage for those two lots.
Right. The Exhibit A that I've seen, on page two at the top said, rather than driveways of 150 feet plus or minus, more customary driveways of approximately 55 feet plus or minus could be utilized. Moreover, the homes on the lots could be located to be more compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Was, was that the intention of the board?
So the, the applicant would have been, at the time, would have been the ones going in front of the Board of Appeals. We weren't going in front of the Board of Appeals. They came to the Planning Board for the original approval, which showed a cul-de-sac.
As I understand, as I understand, the Planning Board submitted a letter to the Board of Appeals in support of the proposal. Is that correct?
The Planning Board submitted a letter in support of reducing the frontage so not to have to build a cul-de-sac right off the roadway. Because the cul-de-sac, it would have been just a, I'm not sure, Steve, if you have the original plan, showing the cul-de-sac layout that we felt was going to deviate from the continuity of the roadway layout.
I wanted, I wanted the cul-de-sac myself.
Yeah.
I totally agree. I totally, here's my quandary. I had, you know, the house across the street was sold and new subdivision was proposed. There's been a lot of controversy about it. I had no objection to dividing the lot, to putting two houses there. I, I had no problem with the minimum frontage variance and I preferred driveways to a cul-de-sac. But what I don't understand is how I started looking at a project that was locating houses 150 feet away that then about three years ago, in support of the variance, stated that houses would be moved to, with 150, with 55-foot driveways and now results in a present plan that's moved the houses, if, if I've got it right, and I'm not good at reading the plans, but they're, they're now the minimum permissible front setback and the driveway can't be longer than, if, if the setback is 25 feet, the driveway can't be 26 or 26 and a half feet. And in the minutes of your meetings, it stated that you were, that the goal was to make it more compatible with the character of the neighborhood. I submit that the minimum setback is not compatible with the house that's existed across the street for, made for 26 years and has actually been there for almost 50 years. And it's not consistent with the setback of the abutting houses all along Francis Wyman Road. What's proposed now would have less setback than any of the seven abutting houses that were, as it was notified, with a single exception being, I believe it's one of, Marty Smith's house, which, which is, which was built in 1875 and has had a setback variance since 1993. And that's my, that's, that's my concern. I'm trying to understand how, by what process as we dealt with drainage considerations, what consideration was given to the fact that the houses were marching closer and closer to Francis Wyman Road? And how do we end up, it's one of the busiest residential streets in our town. And now we're going to have the minimum setback and the driveways won't be configured so that people can turn around and enter Francis Wyman Road driving forward and have to back into the road. I had them, I had some.
Okay, can I just?
Those are my ideas.
Okay, thank you. Who is trying to answer? Steve, is that you?
Steve.
Okay.
You know, the edge of the, the 25 feet from the edge of the right of way, the edge of the pavement looks, you know, probably roughly eight to 10 feet from the edge of the right of way. So we're probably looking, you know, 33, 35 foot on the driveway. If, I think what he's asking is, is if he'd like to see, he'd like to see if we could go to 55. I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem and we could investigate that.
But you mean, you mean pushing the houses further back?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't think.
Something you're willing to consider?
Really just to, what's that?
That's something you're willing to consider.
That's something we'd be willing to consider, yeah.
The apron that extends past your property line can't be considered your driveway. So you can say there's 10 more feet, but you're not permitted to park in a public way.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, you are.
You are.
You are, but Mr. Mullin, it sounds like.
It's not, you know, regardless of that, you know.
It sounds like what Mr. Dresser is saying is that they're willing to consider pushing the houses further back into the lot, which is what you're requesting. So why don't we see if they can, if Mr. Dresser can go back to his, his client and they can discuss that and maybe we can have an answer for you at our next meeting.
Fair enough.
The goal was to minimize the impervious originally.
We're, we're good.
Yeah, Steve?
Yeah, we're good.
It was, and so if you push it back further into the property, it does have more impervious surface if you have a longer driveway, but I think it's something we can consider.
That's correct. I, I would, I would have no problem pushing them back and I'll speak with my team about it.
Okay, so we can discuss that in, in offline and hopefully have an answer for Mr. Mullin at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Are there any other abutters that are here that want to speak?
I'm an abutter, I'm Marty Smith at 105 Francis Wyman. And I just want to say that that would be wonderful if the houses were pushed back. I agree, that, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty. All right.
That it?
Think we are ready for a continuing, a motion to continue.
Madam Chair, before we do that, this is Dana Sacker. I was the site contractor, I was the original applicant that got the project approved. I have never left the project and I brought Waypoint in, in the very beginning. There was a few comments through this process the last few years that the project has changed hands. It has not changed hands. I brought Waypoint in, in the beginning. I actually have the pre-con meeting list and Waypoint is on the list.
Okay, that's good information.
Is this, do you have a question about?
No, what I have to do, Madam Chair, what I have to do is my name's been tossed around quite a bit the last few meetings. I haven't had a chance to come on and, and actually speak for myself. And now I'm running out of the opportunity to do that, Madam Chair. And I have not, I have emailed the board, let me speak, Madam Chair, please. It's been three years I've, I've gone through this.
Mr. Sacker, this has nothing to do with your, with your involvement in the project. This specifically is about that cul-de-sac.
I understand, Madam Chair. I understand what today's about and I know there's a long list and I don't want to hold it up, but I have to let you know that I have a paper trail, I have a paper trail of emails letting the boards know, Tim Mazone from Engineering, that was my go-to engineer to the whole site.
This has nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight. If you have some issues that you want to discuss, we can take them offline. I, I want all of you to stop talking right now, okay? This is not appropriate for this meeting. We are putting this, you can discuss it offline. All right, please go ahead.
Motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of September 3, 2020. I think Brayden has the ability to.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.
Thank you. Roll call?
Oops. You're muted, you're muted.
Chairman LaRue, Vice Chairman Impamba. Member Clark Raymond. Member Gaffney. Member Estayo. Member Rappaport.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, sounds great. We now need a motion to take a bunch of items together for discussion purposes and I don't have the numbers here, Kristen, sorry.
7L, 7M, 7N, 7O, and 7P.
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call?
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Sure.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Estayo. Member Rappaport.
Okay, thank you. Item 7L is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.2. PD Special Permit of the Zoning Bylaws, 31 to 37 North Avenue, Digital Alloys Incorporated is the applicant. Item 7M is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.1, Light Manufacturing or Processing Plans of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw, 31 to 37 North Avenue, Digital Alloys Incorporated is the applicant. Item 7N is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.2. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities included but not limited to, limited to, biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the Planning Board making the findings set forth in Section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park Plan Development bylaw, 1 to 37 North Avenue, Digital Alloys is the applicant. Item 7O is a. Item 7O is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.4. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw 31 to 37 North Avenue, Digital Alloys is the applicant. And finally, item 7P is a public hearing application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.5.5. Generation or storage of hazardous waste, limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw 31 to 37 North Avenue, Digital Alloys is the applicant. Before we start, I want to thank you for your patience and apologize for this hour, and tell you, if you were to ask me to put you at the beginning of the agenda for our next meeting, I would say yes. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. You know, I wanted to go over and give you a quick overview of our company, and, you know, I can understand if you want to move this to the next meeting.
I think we should hear you out and have a quick overview. We're not going to vote tonight, as you know, because we're opening tonight, but we would like to hear what it is that you're doing. And then we can give you some direction and maybe ask a couple of quick questions so you know what it is we'll be looking for at the next meeting, where you will not be.
Would you mind if I shared some slides really quickly?
Sure.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yep. Part of it, yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so my name is Dan Gerard, and I am the production manager at Digital Alloys. Digital Alloys Inc. is a Boston-based startup company with 20 employees located at 37 North Avenue, Burlington, Massachusetts. The company was started in April of 2017, and is comprised mostly of engineering staff. We're currently in the research and development phase, developing a metal additive manufacturing machine, AKA a 3D printer. Our team is led by Duncan Allen, who is our CEO, Carl Calabria, our CTO, Elad Tag is our VP of Engineering. Our process uses welding wire and electricity to melt wire, using a patented technology we've named Jewel Printing. Jewel Printing is a low voltage high-current application, so there's no arc like traditional welding. We heat the wire until it starts to melt, and then deposit the metal layer by layer. So I'll show you a video of that, so you can see what the magic is all about. Is it playing?
Not yet.
No. Oh, there you go.
There you go.
So this is our printer as it lays down metal layer by layer. And it's a very short video, but you can see there's, there's no sparking or arcing like normal welding. Machines use a gantry system, a wire feed system to move in the X and Y directions and deposit molten metal onto a metal substrate below. We do our metal in inert atmosphere, so our printer is in an enclosure, and we fill with argon gas to prevent oxidation from forming on the metal. This is very similar to welding processes. We've printed titanium 13 tool steel to date, but we're focusing on H13 tool steel now. And our machine consumables are metal wire, so you can see Lincoln electric wire there is actually Lincoln as well. Argon gas, and C18150 copper is our contact tip, which is, this is a welding tip that is used for regular welding. Ours is slightly different, basically dimensions and things like that. We don't discuss publicly, but very common materials, and we also use pure tungsten currently. So those are, you know, some consumables that come out of the process. When we're post-processing, we print parts and we have a small in-house machine shop. We bring the parts into the machine shop, and we machine them down into various test samples. So in the bottom right corner here, you can see, this is called the cobbone tensile bar. And this bar would be machined out of a printed part, and then we would break it to check, to check on the tensile strength. Samples can use various tests for density, porosity, tensile strength, and just other material properties. And at this time, we plan to machine and clean customer parts in-house. To give you a little insight into our plans moving forward, we're, our short-term goal is to print parts that we will ship to customers. But our long-term goal is to actually build and sell machines. So, but in the space we're currently in, we will not be able to go full-scale in production. So, you know, we will move before we get into that. And, you know, we're in these stages, so we're still trying to develop the process and, you know, just nail down the parameters so that we can make parts for customers first, and then tailor the machine to do that properly so that we can build machines and sell them later. You know, our recycling disposal plan for materials, you know, we will recycle all the metals. You know, once we have accumulated enough to actually recycle, we currently have a large box of printed parts. But we don't want to leave, get them out of our hands, just because we don't want others to know exactly what we're doing and how the process is performing at this time, so we're kind of keeping that a secret. And then, any chemical disposal that we do is performed by Clean Harvest, currently a yearly schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Well, we have a number of businesses in that same area that do 3D printing, all very different, but it's a, it's an exciting area. There's so many of these technology companies working in close proximity, and we're excited that Burlington has become a home for these businesses, and I think it's great for the town.
All right.
So Kristin, did you have something you wanted to add on this?
Um, no, not, well, yeah, of course, I always have to leave that. No, it's the growing cluster of additive manufacturing here in Burlington. I think we're excited to have this. Everyone is a little bit different. So it's interesting to see kind of, and I'd actually be interested to hear, you know, your decision as to why you chose Burlington, and if it was because of that cluster. But, so I'll give you time to answer that.
Sure, so I think basically Burlington was chosen just because of its location to the other employees and the CEO, you know, where the CEO and the upper management lives. But Burlington has just always been a very, you know, high-tech, you know, area for this type of technology, so, you know, I was not here when they chose to move to Burlington. But I do know that it was just central to many of the employees, and that was a very big factor to making sure people wouldn't have very long commutes.
Yeah, well, good, good. But definitely, we're, we have a couple of new exciting companies in this field coming into Burlington. It is a growing cluster. We're excited about that. We're hoping actually to do some sort of kind of panel, panel discussion education group in the fall about all these super exciting companies coming here to to Burlington to do all of these different things. So, no, overall, just the way that they use and store materials, unlike some of the other metal printing companies that use powders and some other different things, where some of the material storage was actually kind of of a concern, that we had, this is literally like coils of metals, from what I understand, so much less of an issue there. They're still going through the Board of Health, we don't have Board of Health comments. Wait, we have some, no, we do have Board of Health comments. Have you guys concluded with the Board of Health yet?
You know, I've spoken with Christine Mathis numerous times. I'm not sure that I owe her anything else. I've given her everything she's asked for.
During this remote meeting, we won't close anything until the second meeting, just to make sure we have enough time to, for public comment. But overall, what you guys are gonna see at the next meeting is a draft, a decision to act on, similar to the other decisions we have for 3D metal companies. At this point, we kind of have a template, which is exciting, I guess. But, you know, specific changes having to do with their company. But overall, no, we don't have, I don't have any concerns. We're just waiting to make sure the Board of Health is all set as we move forward drafting the decision.
Okay, great, thank you, Kristin. Board members, who wants to, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask? Okay, none of us time, this is public-
Two quick questions.
Okay.
So, just ask the applicant, when you, you're doing your tensile strength, you have an instron on site to- And so you're just basically discarding both sides of the, of the sample, and you've got a big pile of those somewhere?
I wouldn't say a big pile. We have a cabinet full of them. Each sample is, you know, cataloged so that we can track everything.
And it says your chemical disposal is once a year by Clean Harvest. What kind of chemicals are you disposing?
So, we had some acids and etchings for metals. Since we've disposed of them, we had a doctor working for us that was working on checking the porosity and we're scanning electron microscope that they use to look at the grain structure of the metals that we print. So, you know, they had to do some preparation for that. These were all very small bottles of these chemicals, you know. As far as chemical storage goes, we have two fireproof cabinets. And they're about the size of a small refrigerator. So they're not, you know, like, like a dorm fridge, so they're not very big. And actually, right now, one of them is, has had four gallons of acetone, four gallons of isopropyl alcohol, and four gallons of hand sanitizer. So we're not storing enough chemicals, and the other, the other chemical cabinet is, is very light right now as well. It's not, not even, I'd say about 80% full.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I think Madam Chair is falling asleep.
I'm mute, Barbara.
Sorry, I didn't realize, I was on mute. I was just asking if there's anyone else who wants to ask a question on the board? And seeing no one, is there anyone in the listening audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment? No, okay.
Motion to the committee this matter until Planning Board meeting of September 3rd.
Second.
Second. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Chairman Npamba. Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, next, 7Q RNS.
Yes, thank you so much, and we will get you in early on the agenda next time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want a motion to take 7Q RNS together?
7Q RNS.
Motion to, yeah, motion to take item 7Q, 7R, 7S together for discussion purposes. And a two poll every second.
And vote on them separately.
That's what I said, right.
Yeah. Yes. Item 7Q. Is a continued application for approval of preliminary subdivision. 200, 400, and 600 Summit Drive, Gutierrez Company is the applicant.
I'll just go with that.
Item 7R is-
Yep, 7Q RNS.
For approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan. 200, 400, and 600 Summit Drive, Gutierrez Company is the applicant. And item 7S is an application for approval of a minor engineering change. 200, 400, and 600 Summit Drive is, and Gutierrez Company is the applicant. And you guys really had to wait a long time. Thank you so much.
I was going to say good morning, but-
Oh, and Bob too, still here too.
That's the challenge, before midnight.
Good morning.
So, um, okay, this, we actually can vote on tonight, and hopefully we will get that done. But Scott, take it away.
Well, Madam Chair, both of you, Reuben Bernstein. As you will recall, the last time we were before the board, it was for the preliminary subdivision. And the whole purpose of this was to effectuate the rezonings that have occurred over the last two town meetings with respect to the IH zoning and the life science opportunities. So now that the entire site has been zoned to IH, we are doing no construction to the subdivision way. We are essentially, all we are doing is changing the cul-de-sac, the layout of the cul-de-sac, by changing the radius to permit adequate frontage for the third, fourth lot, really, to permit development of a potential, hopefully, life-size user. We're adding approximately 2,100 square feet to the radius or the cul-de-sac by changing the radius. And the result of that is that the existing building 200 and the other lots, to make sure that they conform to the then current zoning, we had to do a minor engineering change to address the tables with respect to parking and dimensionals, because we have changed internal lot lines. So there's no, there's no construction being proposed. We've asked for a number of waivers because we're changing nothing other than that yellow shaded area that you could see on the cul-de-sac. That's changing the radius. We follow the preliminary because it's required. The definitive is the same as the preliminary. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you. So, so just to clarify, we're gonna vote on the preliminary tonight. We will not vote on the definitive because we're opening that tonight.
Right, I understand.
Okay. Kristin, did you have anything you needed to add?
So I want, so yeah, so item 7Q, actually, item 7Q is a preliminary. There's two motions for you guys to read on that. And then there's the list of waivers. But again, preliminary doesn't allow for anything. It just gives you guidance in moving into the definitive, which all of the waivers that have been requested are all of the waivers that are typically requested when you are not building a road. They are not building a road, the road's already there. And the, so I guess I would recommend that you vote the preliminary. And then I had a question after you vote that, for Scott or Bob to just quickly, in like one sentence, tell us what the minor engineering change is about, after you've voted the preliminary. So vote the preliminary, so we can get that out of the way, if you want.
Okay.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
Are you ready, Madam Chair?
I am. I don't know if our other board members have questions, or if they're ready to proceed.
On the preliminary only.
Yes. Okay, looks like we can vote on the preliminary.
Pursuant to Section 2.4 of the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations, the Planning Board hereby finds preliminary subdivision plans in application for 200, 600 Summit Drive, submitted by Gutierrez Company, to be a complete and proper submission.
Chair, second?
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Next motion.
You, you ready for the next motion, or does somebody else want to do that?
Go, Paul, go.
Go for it, Paul.
Motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan entitled preliminary subdivision plan, Burlington Summit, 200, 400, and 600 Summit Drive, Burlington, Mass., submitted by Gutierrez Company Plan, prepared by SMMA, dated July 2, 2020, to reconfigure the existing lot lines associated with 400 Summit Drive to create additional frontage support in newly configured lots, and subject to following terms and conditions.
As printed. Nope, as printed.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, now, one of you tell us what the minor engineering change does.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the minor engineering change essentially is required because we're creating a new lot, which means we're changing internal lot lines, which obviously would change the existing dimensional tables. Table that is on the approved site plan. So we've had to break them into separate zoning tables to address each of the lots. It's nothing to make, other than to make the zoning tables that are already existing approved site plan conform to what we're doing with respect to the dimensional changes. The zoning stays the same, the setbacks, the buffer zones, everything stays the same. But parking numbers on an existing lot will change because we're creating a new lot, so.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Do the board members have any questions? No, I think there might be one neighbor present. Is there a neighbor present that has any questions? Okay, I mistake. Who is Alan Milner? Okay, I thought he was a neighbor, but I guess not.
Yes, I am a neighbor.
Hi.
Hi, just trying to unmute myself here. I'd like to know what they're going to do with the new lot.
Eventually find a user, hopefully. There are no, there, there's no user in place now, but we will be going to try to find a, a user for that lot.
And whatever you do on the lot, you need to come back to the.
At that point in time, as a matter of fact, when we went to the, when we went to the Board of Health, we actually had them, there's a condition in there that this will not change. We'll have to get site plan approval. If there are any special permits, we'll have to go through the whole process. It's just at the point right now, creating a lot, whether it's a standalone opportunity.
Okay, I, I think the prior board actions on this property were motivated, and the, and the town meeting motivated by limits on traffic.
To some extent, there's, there's traffic. There are also concerns about the neighbors behind in Lexington and the impact on your property and your enjoyment of your property. This particular site, or this part of the site, I think is pretty far away from those neighbors.
It is. We're respecting the buffer zones that were agreed upon. Yes, it's further down towards the Route 3, Middlesex Turnpike, the, what we refer to as the Department of Transportation land. But we are respecting all of the setbacks that were previously agreed upon.
Well, and further with the rezoning to IH, encouraging less intense traffic demand, traffic intense uses, which is one of the, the reasons we wanted to, to go to IH, to have more of kind of a lab space than anything with a higher intense traffic demand.
And if we come forward with the user and, and before the board, we'll have to, we'll have to address the traffic.
Yeah.
Somebody please tell us what is IH?
Industrial high-rise.
But, but that's a misnomer for what we've changed, changed it to. It's actually the same height limitations, or very similar height limitations to general industrial.
What is that limitation?
The height limitation there is, is either 80 or 90 feet, which is pretty similar to what's there today.
But, but it steps back from residential property. So it's, as you get close to the existing buildings, you might be able to get there, but along the residential side, it's, it's from 30 going up, so.
Right, from 30, 30 feet within 200 feet, like about the height of a typical house building, and then it stops up in increments from there, 40, 50, 60, as you get further away.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other neighbors or any other people in the listening audience that want to comment on this?
Yes. You can't, I don't have a camera, so you can't see me, but I'm a neighbor. I'm a butter. And I would like to know more information on what.
Tell us your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. I am Matthew Abate. I am at 36 North Street in Lexington.
Okay.
I just, I, I am not clear on what those setbacks are that were mentioned. What are the agreed-upon setbacks for future development?
From the residential zone, there's a hundred-foot residential setback from the properties on North Street, I believe.
Yep, there, there's a hundred-foot, a hundred-foot buffer. There's a, no taller than 30 feet within the first 200 feet. And then.
20 feet, you get every.
Every hundred feet after that, you get an additional 20 feet.
So how, how many buildings are conceivably to be built eventually?
There, there's the potential for really one additional building.
So if there's one additional building, it's not likely to be anywhere close to 100 feet from our lot lines, or is it?
Oh, it, it would be significantly further, probably 200 feet at a minimum, and probably a little bit further than that even.
One of, I think one of the reasons for the configuration, at least that was explained to me early on, was to try to get the building closer to the clustering of existing buildings and not.
Down at the lower, at the highway end of the lot.
To try to cluster it with the existing buildings for that campus feel.
How would it fit around the, there's a kind of a settlement pond down there now?
That's right. There is a detention pond in there now. The site planning hasn't been fully configured or explored yet, but it would probably require some either relocation or modification to that pond.
Because that would be the general area that you'd be interested in building in?
Correct.
That, that end of the lot.
Yeah.
Towards the end of the pond, yes.
Yeah.
The far end of the pond from the neighborhood, the close end to the, to the existing buildings. Yep, to the cul-de-sac. That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's anyone else, please identify yourself.
This is Paul. I just want some, some orientation, because when you're talking about neighbors, I walk up in there frequently. I get down to the end of the canyon, up around, and, and you can see the neighbors on North Street. But this, God, that's hundreds of feet away, you know? There's the whole canyon between this, this development and where you folks are. And you can't even see the place, you know?
You can see it, but it's not too close.
Yeah.
We can, we can actually see the existing buildings from our house.
Yeah, I've, I've actually gone down to Adams Street in the past and, and with permission, watched through people's backyards. You can see the existing buildings. I think this new building, which we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but this new site or building will likely not be visible from your backyards.
Yeah, it looks like it would be farther away.
It will be.
And are, is there a, does the zoning permit any other buildings beyond that, somewhere down the road, five or 10 years away?
No, well, I don't, I don't believe so.
We're constrained by how much floor area we've developed on this site.
If anything happens, whether, you know, this application, if any construction, you will be notified for site plan approval. For anything moving forward, including what they're talking about right now.
Okay, do any board members have any additional questions before we move on? Okay, all right.
Motion to continue items 7R and 7S to the Planning Board Meeting of September 3rd, 2020.
Seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond, member Cavino, member Gaffney, member Espia, member Rappaport.
Yes.
Well, now I get to say, good morning. Good morning.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Right, it is. So I, I failed in my endeavor to get this done on Friday, on Thursday.
Good try.
Really quickly.
Hey, guys.
Thank you.
Everyone stay healthy. Everyone stay healthy.
Thanks, Bob. Moving on very quickly. And let's get through this fast. 36 Mill Street definitive subdivision. We are.
We have no update yet, so.
We have no updates. We want to extend the deadline for 36 Mill Street definitive subdivision for me. Second, 2020 to me.
We don't have an update, so just.
It's run by the power lines, isn't it?
We'll skip it. We'll deal with it later. I think we can skip the, can we skip the economic development liaison for now?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, at least ask the question.
Melissa Tintaklis, who is our new economic development coordinator, is looking for a liaison to Planning Board. At least one, possibly two, if anyone would like to volunteer for that.
I'll volunteer.
I'll volunteer.
I would.
Okay, we've got three. We probably can't take three. Who wants to fight for it?
Who is it? Brenda and Mike?
Yeah.
Brenda, Mick, and Ernie have all volunteered.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'll back out. I'll back out.
Okay, Brenda and Mike, you're welcome. Great. Okay, I think you'll enjoy working with Melissa. Kristin, you'll let Melissa.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
Do we have the minutes?
We can table them if you'd like.
Let's table minutes, because I haven't heard of you.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm just going to take the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Hi, Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Sure.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espia.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Thank you, all of you. I'm very, very sorry for the late hour. This one kind of got away from me. And I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
For the rest of your day, everyone. Thank you, guys. Good job.
Good job. Good night. Good job, Brady.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night, ladies. See you later.
All right. All right, Brady, I will see you in the morning.
Yep.
And later in the morning.
Yeah.
All right, great job.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye. You did it.